I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Pang.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald. Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I didn't mean to hesitate. I just can't believe it's November nineteenth already. I had to really do a double take on that. Okay. We are gonna start with our invocation given by Pastor Tyler Grace of Christ Community Church, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Reardon.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff and guests. Would you pray with me? Father God, I thank you for you. God, I thank you for your grace toward us, your love toward us. I thank you for our community, Alamogordo, for the people that make it up, for our leaders here tonight. Lord, I ask for your blessings upon us. Lord, I ask for your guidance for us. Guide our community, God, to be a place of prosperity, a place of well-being, and a place for people to thrive. Father, I ask that you give our leaders wisdom to lead us in that direction. Be with them tonight and be with them every day, that they do the work to shepherd and guide this community. I ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Grace. Okay. Is...well, let's start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would like to make one comment on that. So we will be pulling item five tonight, which is the unfinished business item that is considered an act upon ordinance seventeen oh seven KC dash two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero five for first vocational map amendment to rezoned seventeen oh one Cuba Avenue from R one single-family dwelling district to R three two-family dwelling district. The reason for this is the resident representative for the case is ill and was not able to attend tonight, so he requested that be moved to a meeting next month.
Okay. Thank you. We just talked about that, too. I wrote it down right here. I should've wrote it right there. Anyway, alrighty. And with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minus item five?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Paul? Will the clerk please put up the vote? I will get used to that someday. I promise. And motion passes seven zero. We're gonna move on to presentations. Is Corey Schmidt here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, there you are. I said, "I wonder if he's here," and everybody looked familiar, but you were kind of hiding back there. I apologize. If you want to come up, I'm anxious to hear what you have to say. It's a presentation on homelessness and panhandling in on Alamogordo streets. And if you'll just state your name for the record.
Corey Schmidt.
Okay, very good.
So first of all, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Thanks for scheduling time to hear from a resident of Alamogordo. I was asked coming here if there would be a PowerPoint. Absolutely not. I think that's boring, and you'd all be asleep by the time I was done. To get straight to the point, I'm here about the health and safety of residents in Alamogordo. The panhandlers in our streets are a detriment to all of those things, our health, our safety, our prosperity. So you're all new faces to me because the last time that I lived here was sixteen years ago. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce myself. Again, my name is Corey Schmidt. I moved here to Alamogordo in nineteen ninety-seven, when my father retired from the Air Force at Harlem Air Force Base. I grew up here, went to Sierra Elementary, Mountain View Middle School, graduated from Alamogordo High School. I enlisted in the Army right over there at White Sands Mall on my eighteenth birthday. So during my service, I saw a lot of the world. It sucks. From what I remembered of Alamogordo, this is as good as it gets. This is my home. I felt safe here. And I'm back now. After nearly two decades of service away from Alamogordo, I realize it's not the same as when I left it. I see residents of my hometown harassed on the streets daily, and it's a problem. I've seen panhandlers curse at families and their kids in their vehicles at intersections on the roads. They discourage people from shopping at businesses in town by camping outside of the doors. They throw rocks at people's vehicles when they refuse to give them money. Residents call the police to deal with these incidents to no consequence for the offenders. This affects our families, our economy, our business owners, and you, Mayor, Commissioners. This affects all of us because we take responsibility for this city by nature of serving in positions of authority and leadership. At this point, you may be thinking of surveys or data that you've seen that suggests these are minor incidents. They are rare in frequency. But I'm gonna tell you that the number of panhandlers doesn't matter. From experience, I will tell you that it's real easy to make a dozen people feel like a hundred. It's not about their numbers. It's about where they are. These panhandlers are located at every major choke point in town. And they do this intentionally. They know what they're doing. It's to make their presence felt, seen, and affect the community at the highest level possible with as few people as possible. Alamogordo is allowing its citizens to be at risk and hurting our economy in the process. I understand that some citizens want to provide relief to these panhandlers. Let them. I understand what it's like to struggle, and I understand that sometimes it's nice to just help somebody. But as leaders of this city, you have an obligation to consider the rest of your citizens, too, who do not feel the same. Some citizens simply want to buy groceries for their families without being harassed in the parking lot or approached by strange men and women when they're alone. Lastly, these panhandlers are residents of Alamogordo, too. Your leadership positions require that you consider their well-being, too. I'm not saying that panhandlers deserve punishment nor relief. I'm saying Alamogordo deserves a way to mitigate their impact on my hometown. I don't like to complain without having solutions to recommend, so here they are. Allow people to beg for money in my hometown. Allow it. But designate a place for them to do so. This will allow residents and business owners to operate peacefully, go about their daily lives uninterrupted, unimpeded, while informing charitable citizens and organizations who want to help these people exactly where they can go to help them, if that's the argument that they want to make, that we should help these people instead. I would recommend that we designate a place in town for them to conduct these activities. I bring this up to you because many in town feel that it's pointless to do so. They say it's pointless to try and change the situation. The city won't do anything about it, I've heard people say. Some citizens feel uncomfortable even voicing the stance that I'm presenting to you right now. They may agree wholeheartedly with what I'm saying, but they don't want to be seen as the bad guy for fear of being the only one who may feel that way. I may sound harsh, but again, I'm not saying that they don't deserve relief. I'm saying we designate a place for them to receive it, should people choose to give it. So people think it's pointless to try and change this situation. I disagree. I believe you miss every shot you don't take, and if you don't ask, you don't get. You must be in those seats because you've demonstrated leadership among your peers, subordinates, superiors at some point in your careers. Well, I ask that now is the time to show it. I know that this presentation's not scheduled as a call to action, but I will take the appropriate steps to make it so. Using your official channels, you and I can work together to make it a reality. You and I are not enemies. We all want this to be a better place to live. If you were to ask my recommendation for a place in town to designate for panhandling activities, I would recommend the parking lot right outside this building. If you wouldn't feel comfortable with that, then you understand exactly the point that I'm making with this presentation. If anyone in Alamogordo has ever been harassed or avoided a business in town because of panhandlers, then I hope they'll hear my words. They're not alone, and they don't have to tolerate it. I will not. I want my hometown to be the place that I remember, that I grew up in, and that my children will now grow up in. I appreciate the time you've taken to hear me out. I intentionally left time for a dialogue, if you choose to take it. Otherwise, I'll stand by until the end of this meeting if you have any questions or comments. Have a good evening.
Okay, hang on just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
How long have you been back here?
My family and I, my wife and two children, moved back in June, late May, early June of this year.
Okay, so I am gonna have a little bit of a dialogue with you because I one thousand percent agree with everything you just said. There's a couple of things I want you to know, okay? Number one, let's start here. Stephanie, what did I call you about this morning?
The homeless camp off Florida.
That's right. There's a homeless camp on Florida, and I called her, and I said, "Get it out of there" because it shouldn't be there. Every single...I want you to know that I one thousand percent agree with you, and every single day, I'm on the lookout for it, every single day. And when we see it and it's on city property, they're gone. And if you sound heartless, then I sound heartless. And I will also tell you this. I run a human services nonprofit in town. I help homeless...Nadia's sitting right here. She can tell you. I help homeless people every day. I help people in need every single day. So I have it...I look at it from two perspectives. Number one, I do not believe that just giving things out or handing things out is the right way to do it. I think you're taking away people's dignity, and I think that there shouldn't be any designated place for that. We have plenty of nonprofits in this town that help people, and I think that's where we need to direct them. And I will also tell you that we don't want it either. And we just got a report from our city manager last Friday, or maybe over the weekend, and it is one of the things that she works on almost daily because none of us want this. I want you to know that none of us want this. This is not good for our city. And it's interesting that you said they sit there and harass you until you give them what they want because what have I said a million times? They sit there and harass you because they know if they do that long enough, you're going to give them what they want to get rid of them. It's called manipulation. It happens all the time here. So I just...I want you to know that I don't disagree with you, and I don't like it either. I don't like driving by our streets. I don't like looking on our corners and seeing people literally camped out. I don't like it. I complain about it every day. But I do want you to know that we are working on it because we do recognize that if we don't, we're gonna have a real serious problem. And not everybody agrees with me either. You're absolutely right. Not everybody agrees with me. Some people think I'm, you know, mean or whatever, but I work with this every single day. I understand what you're saying, and I think it's something that we have to be mindful of all the time. So I just want you to know, I could see the passion, you know, I could see it in your eyes. I could hear it in your voice, but I want you to know it is something that we are...ad nauseam talking about. So we do recognize that it's a problem. And for those who say the city won't do anything, that's a cop-out. That's an excuse because I get very, very few...I don't know. I can't speak for the rest of my Commissioners, but I get very few emails, very few phone calls on it. And when I do get a phone call, I'm on it right away. Because let's face it, you know, I've always said and I will continue to say that Alamogordo is not a big city until you have to clean it up, right? We don't have enough officers to be everywhere. We don't have enough people to be everywhere. So we count on our citizens to let us know. And when they say things like "the city won't do anything," that's just a cop-out. We need more people like you that say, "This is what's going on. Can you take care of it?" Because I assure you that when I get those calls, it's taken care of. So I just wanted you to know that, that we're not turning a blind eye to it. I'm not turning a blind eye to it. I can tell you that. I don't like it. I think it takes away a person's dignity to see them sleeping on the street, honestly. If they can do better. I believe that everybody has potential and everybody is capable. And when I see them sleeping on the street because they think that's all there is, it just kills me because I think that they can do better and have better. So I just wanted you to know that.
Ma'am, thanks for your comments.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything, any questions, any comments? No? Okay. Thank you for taking the time. I appreciate it. Okay. I have nobody signed up for public comment. I don't think anybody came in after we grabbed the sheet. So with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commission. I have a couple of things for you. I know normally we cancel the second meeting in December. We have a lot of things that we need to cover for end of year, before the end of the year. It's not on Christmas week. It's the week before. It's the third Tuesday. So we're gonna go ahead and keep it if Commission would allow that. By the end of the year, we have our loan coming up. We have the status of APD and future policing coming up, audit, Commissioner Paul's recognition for being a Commissioner. Then we have the vacancy resolution. We have the calendar for next year, public camping ordinance, possible LIDA information, intersection upgrade, projects awards, officer recognition. I mean, we have just tons of stuff coming up, and I'm pretty sure you guys don't want that on one meeting. But your decision if you choose to do that. Also, you're gonna start noticing in future meetings that we're gonna have...like tonight, we have Jimmy and Eddie here to talk about the items of concerns that we're getting from citizens. That way, as a Commission, you can ask straight the department that's dealing with this because there's a lot of information that goes back and forth between me and you. And sometimes it takes me a while to get back to you. Sometimes I get lost in translation. So I figured that it's better for our departments to come up and discuss it so that we can get information on the record and out to the citizens of the right information. And finally, we're opening our budget season. We had workshops. Evelyn held them Friday and Monday. And just a heads up, we will be going more than one day. We will probably go two or three days. It's gonna...we have some plans coming up that we believe we need at least two days for sure. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission.
Just had a question.
Commissioner Paul.
What the...so what are the anticipated meeting dates for December?
The third and the nineteenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah. The first...it's the first and the third Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay, so the only thing I have is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. The Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. So shop small, shop local, and don't forget downtown is open. For those of you that are watching, support our businesses downtown. And so that is coming up. There's obviously...what do they call it, the day after Thanksgiving?
Black Friday.
Black Friday, yeah. I never...you are not gonna catch me in a store on Black Friday. But so Saturday is Small Business Saturday, so make sure you support our small, local businesses. And check out the downtown area. I'm super impressed with what is going on down there. There are three new businesses going on downtown. There's a new one, new bakery downtown. A lot of great things happening, so make sure you check that out as well. And I think... Oh, yeah, and there was the...Sharon and I were both on the Zoom meeting for the accreditation, the reaccreditation, I guess that's how you say it, annual accreditation for Alamogordo Main Street. And they are going to be recommended for reaccreditation, and they've got some great things going on. So those folks work really hard. And yeah, so I'm really excited. I'm really excited for this next year. There's...we're gonna have a lot of great things happening, so it's nice to see all that work coming to fruition. So anyway, okay. Is there anything else? No? All right, with that, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull off the consent agenda? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? Okay, and motion passes seven zero. We pulled item five for a later date. We're gonna move on to new business. Item six, discussion and update on road conditions and maintenance improvements. Jimmy Vargas, our Public Works Director, and Eddie Garza, the street manager, have some info for us.
I do.
I am looking forward to this one, too, so.
I think a lot of people might be.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commission. So thank you for your time. I'm here to discuss a little bit of our road conditions that our street and weed and drainage department provides to the city, and some updates and some changes that we made, some different things that we're doing to up the production, to get some of this patching done and other things. I'm gonna talk to you about a few points that I'm gonna make, a couple of items of discussion. And then in the last item, I'm going to show you a patching mapping tool that Justin Boyle, project manager, developed. It's a tool that we use to plan and, you know, what am I trying to say here? Sorry, I'm a little nervous. You know, schedule. That's the word I'm trying to look for, schedule. Sometimes it's difficult to schedule. These patches are all over town, and some of them are spread apart. So this patching tool has been really helpful. So I'll provide that in the end. But the first few points that I'm gonna talk about will be staffing and scheduling, some of the changes we made to our staffing, to up the maintenance efforts. Street maintenance, utilizing two crews for patching, maximizing all of our resources available. In October, mandatory overtime was implemented. In October, mandatory overtime was implemented to give our crews more time to patch as needed. So we assign them a certain amount of patches. If they have to stay past for time, they do. Um, this is mandatory. Uh, employee schedules have been adjusted to allow more time in the afternoon to patch. Um, typically they were coming in a little earlier. It's darker. Now they're coming in a little later so that they're able to stay late and, um, work. And usually it's warmer in the afternoon, which is ideal for patching, for asphalt patching. Um, in addition to that, Weed and Drainage Department has been assisting us. They've been really, really helpful, providing additional assistance to our asphalt crews. Um, you know, uh, different things like, um, traffic control, saw cutting. But in, so in, in it, overall, they've been a really big help. And they've been very cooperative, um, assisting asphalt in our street maintenance. Uh, since these changes were implemented, which was towards the end of October, daily patching has increased, I'm happy to say, uh, from September 9th to October 25th to 25th, 59 patches were completed. So that's about seven weeks, 59 patches. Okay? From October 28th to November 15th, 49 patches were completed. So within a span of three weeks, they almost eclipsed that amount or equal that amount that they did in seven weeks. So definitely production has increased since we've done mandatory overtime. Um, so they went up from averaging two patches a day to five patches a day, which is, uh, a pretty good increase. And, um, we're going to hope to keep moving with that. Next point I want to make is our patch status. Um, as of September 9th, big number, 351 patches were identified throughout the city. Okay? As of 11/18, 266 asphalt patches remain. So we've, we've, uh, put a dent into that big number, 351 to 266. 75 are on projects. They are titled water sewer replacement programs. Okay? So 55 are tentatively scheduled and 136 not started. So we have 55 that are tentatively scheduled currently. Um, I'll show you that on a map. It's, there's the, uh, indicator and I'll kind of go over that with you again in a little bit. 136 are not started. We still got to get, locate and plan on those. Uh, the 191 total that we are still, uh, in progress to working on. This, these numbers all include all the repairs that utilities have made in the last six or seven weeks. Utilities constantly open up holes, doing repairs, um, doing different projects like, uh, valve replacement and different stuff like that. So these, these numbers include that. Uh, street maintenance is focused on repairing patches on areas that are not scheduled for water sewer replacement projects. So some of these projects, they're going to have new utilities, new asphalt roads. So we're kind of staying away from patching on these roads. These projects are, are moving forward or in progress. We go and patch these roads, it's more of like doing double the work. Um, patch scheduling consists of oldest to newest. Uh, we revamped our work order system so that we can target the older patches. Some of these patches have been there for a little while. Of course, with the complaints that I'm sorry all of you received, these, you can tell which ones have been there longer. So we're targeting the oldest to the newest. Um, at times, um, patches come up with a priority. In other words, where roads that are heavily traveled, like Florida and Indian Wells. So these patches have to be interrupted in our normal schedule, their priority. They slow us down a little, but that's what we, that's what we do. Uh, school zone crossings, another priority type, uh, patch that interrupts our project, projected scheduling. Um, department contributions. So Utility Department averages around 11 patches, 11 repairs per day, per week. In other words, they're out and they're doing repairs or they're doing projects, valve replacements or whatever, they usually open up about 11 holes, utilities or utility maintenance department. Um, street maintenance is given, given a goal of 20 patches a week to overlap the utility repairs with a goal to catch up and gain ground on the number of patches that need completing. So if they're opening up 11, we're giving a goal of 20. So we're kind of doubling that and that's the goal, trying to get ahead of that, get ahead and to start catching up on some of the patches that have been sitting. Utility, Utilities has allowed street maintenance to use equipment to assist with the patching, which has been really helpful. So Utility Department has given us some dump trucks and that's been really helpful. Um, so that's some of the department contributions. Um, Utilities averages 11 pairs of, yep, exactly, Utilities, okay. So the next point I want to make is concrete pairs and technical standards. So a couple of things. Concrete pair, that's a separate type of a crew that we have. They do concrete sidewalks. You've seen them sidewalk curb, gutter, that kind of thing. And they do their, they do their own work orders. So they're separate from asphalt. Uh, we've implemented the technical standards with that department, uh, with that area. Um, and I'll explain technical standards in a moment. Concrete pair is moving at a more consistent pa- pace uh, due to the organized, organization of work order process. We've changed some of the work order processes that we've done. Um, and again, we've, we've really just targeted oldest to newest. So that's been really helpful to getting concrete and the patches done uh, in a more organized, organized, um, fashion. Additionally, the Weed and Drainage Department is assisting with the larger jobs. So again, Weed and Drainage comes into play. They've been really helpful with concrete also. Sometimes we have big stretches of concrete. Weed and Drainage jumps in there and gives us a hand. These guys have been really, really helpful and they've been very cooperative. We're really thankful to have them in our, in our area. Um, the city's technical standards have been implemented and utilized by concrete crews and street maintenance. Technical standards are guidelines designed to provide more durability and longer term quality of street maintenance work. So technical standards are important. Um, so just a quick explanation, expansion joints between concrete so the concrete doesn't crack. Concrete expands and contracts. These joints are put in between these concrete pieces so that they're longer durability, no cracks, um, you know, stuff like that. Um, and if you remember, we had a lot of projects on 10th Street, believe it was in September, October, um, asphalt, concrete. We let those areas stand for seven days. We, we blocked the road for almost seven days. And the reason why we did that was so that these areas could cure. In previous, uh, times, asphalt would get opened up right away. We started driving on these big patches, they would get compromised. Now we are waiting until these patches cure, concrete, same thing on these roadways, to keep these, to get, to keep the quality up. Um, it's important. So getting these, getting these items to be, giving them their time to settle and cure makes, gives it a little bit more longer durability. Um, the introduction of a new, uh, tracking tool. So we got a new tracking tool like I spoke to you folks about. Uh, it's developed by Justin Boyle. It's a really, really, uh, helpful tracking tool, shows us a lot of different things. I'm going to show it to you on a big monitor. Gives us a couple of points and I'll explain that to you in a moment. Uh, this map provides information and transparency to city management and to street maintenance staff. So the patch map is projected in our street maintenance department so that our staff can see the patches and everything else. Um, so this tool has been really valuable for our staff. Um, they see the production, they see the colors and I'll explain all these things to you in a moment. But by them seeing this map every day and seeing the productivity, it's, uh, improved morale and given the staff a sense of accomplishment and productivity. Um, so with that, I'm going to head to the back and I'll kind of show you guys a couple of the main points on this map. And then I'll open up for questions unless you want to ask some questions now. Do you have any questions while I'm at the podium?
Uh, at the, at the current rate that you're, you're getting these patched, uh, how long do you think it'll take you to get caught up?
Um, can you repeat that, sir?
How long it'll take you to get caught up at the, at the rate you're going? Because you're, they're opening up 11, you're doing 20. So you're, you're gaining, you know, nine or 10 of them a week.
You know, um, right now we're on a crunch. We're, like I said, in, in October, end of October, it was all mandatory overtime. So we're pushing as hard as we can. Asphalt's a little tricky. Once we come to middle of December, third week of December, it's going to be too cold to patch. And then that process is going to slow down unfortunately. So, you know, realistically, we're looking at probably.
Spring.
Late, late February, maybe March. We're really looking to really get, we can get that number down below 175. That's going to be a positive thing. We're going to really see a difference out on those streets. But once it gets cold, it's going to really slow down. And, you know, asphalt sits in a dump truck and while they're doing their work, it gets cold and it's hard to handle and manage while it's cold.
Do we not still have that trailer that's heated for that? We used to have one. I don't know if we still do or not, but.
Is it a, like a pothole?
Um, it was a, it was a trailer specifically for asphalt that kept it heated while they transported it around.
That's a pothole patcher, yeah. We do. And actually it's in for repair. Um, but yeah, we do use that for smaller items. Um, the patching I'm talking about is more like bigger squares, bigger, bigger areas where, you know, potholes.
The reason I'm asking is that, you know, just to, to help with staff time. I know we had done our, uh, a bid on it and we'd actually awarded it, but I think it wasn't quite the scope that we were wanting. Is if we, you know, put out an RFP or whatever for a, another contractor to come in and help us get back to, so it seems like you guys have gotten on it where you can handle it once it's back to a normal workload. But, uh, I just didn't know if it would be in the, our best interest to, to get a contractor in to help you guys get it caught up.
You know, you know, sir, uh, we have actually a Mesa Verde contract in place and we've been using that also. Um, it's a little slow going because they're, they've got a lot of work. And so it's been tough to get them to do our patches because realistically, our patches are smaller stuff. They're dealing with like roadways and different, and different things like that. And I know a lot of their crews are out in Las Cruces. So been a little bit tricky getting them to do some of our patching.
So is that that contract that we did a couple of months ago?
Yeah, Mesa, yeah, exactly.
We have the contract, but they're not fulfilling it?
It's, it's a little, we're trying to work with them the best we can, sir, you know? Um, I know that they said they're going to start, uh, they're going to give us some patches to do. They're going to be able to do some for us in December, I believe.
Okay.
We just did, um, about a half a dozen, about nine of them for us. So that was a big help.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, I think we're going to try to get them to do another maybe dozen or so here right around the holiday time. So that'll help a big, a lot. And then they said that after the holidays, they'll be able to really, really provide some assistance. So that'll be good. Um, but that won't be till January or February. Um, and keep in mind that Mesa Verde, they're the only plant and they're the only source for asphalt here in our town. So we've had a lot of days where we just haven't been able to run asphalt because they're just not providing. That happened Monday this week as a matter of fact. All of our crews are ready to go and we call and no asphalt. So it can, you know, and then weather. But, um, yeah, it's a little bit tricky and we're just trying to navigate around that. And Mesa Verde's been pretty good. They've been helpful, but.
They just run the one plant out there? They don't run the other one they have?
No, they only have the one out in the, at Brash. And yeah, it would be really helpful if we had our own asphalt plant there at the yard. But, you know, that's a future consideration, you know?
That's how Rio Del Sol does it. They have their own batch plant. And, uh, they, they do their own. So, but all right now, I just was wondering if it would be beneficial to, but it sounds like we already have. It's just not quite working the way we intended.
Yeah, it's a little slow going, but we're pushing that a little bit more too. So, uh, we'll, we'll be utilizing that to get some catch up done, you know?
Yeah, that's one of my biggest complaints that we get is, is patches. Uh, there's some over down here off of, between Cuba and Oregon. I think I asked about them back when Brian was still city manager and they're still not patched.
And I think if I could just say something, um, Jimmy, Eddie and I had a meeting. Um, I think Justin was there, I'm not sure. But it's, it's evolved, um, it's not just about us. It's not about us being behind. It's about the citizens. And I think that they reiterated that to their staff that it's, it's, at the end of the day, we're affecting our citizens' quality of life by going over these potholes. And I believe that we're doing a better job at communicating that to the staff, so.
Could we, I don't know if we could do it with CES, but you know, there's a couple of smaller asphalt contractors in town. Could we maybe do, break it into pieces and say, hey, you guys do this section of town or you do this section and, and bid that out? Or just do it with CES or something along those lines?
Yeah, so we are, um, we met, I think in October and we said we're going to reevaluate about December-ish and see what the next steps are. So, I mean, we'll, we'll look at everything that we can, that possibly comes up.
Yeah, just to get us caught up. Like I say, I think staff can handle it. Once it's caught up, it just got so far behind that, you know, at one time, I think we had five or 600 patches around town that were open.
Yeah, it hit 400 at one point. It was pretty high, you know? I mean, I, I did the numbers today and I saw that 266 and I was like.
That's actually pretty good.
Great, you know, I mean, it isn't, it's not great, but in my point of view, I know it hit 400.
I know, I was doing a job up there off of Thunder Road, man. And there was, I think, 12 on Thunder Road alone.
Well, we were up there for a little while. I can tell you, um.
You were up there.
A month, I think a month.
Yeah, and I have to tell you, the, the citizens up there were very, very happy. They, um, my secretary lives up there and she goes, I don't know what happened. She said, but all of the sudden, they're showing up every day and they're fixing the roads. And I'm like, and I will tell you that on my street, we had this, like dip in the road. And my husband kept saying, I think you need to call in. I'm like, no, because I felt so guilty. I was like, oh no, the last thing I need is them working on the mayor's. There was a darn leak under the road. I let that thing go for months before I finally called. And then he tells me, there was a leak under there. And I, I, I just didn't want him to like make my road a pri-. Okay, I've learned my lesson. I'm not doing that again, but.
Yeah, and I think after we finished up there, um, we were all happy, moved on to the area. And what, once you know it, guess another water leak sprung out and we had another patch right after we left. It just goes that way, you know? It's kind of hard to get a handle on.
You don't know, you never know. And so anyway, I learned a lesson with that.
I know you receive a lot of complaints. Do you receive any compliments?
Uh, yes, yes, definitely. We've had a lot of compliments. Uh, matter of fact, the area up there in Thunder Road area, I've gotten a few emails telling us thank you. And I pass that along to the staff, um, because they need to hear that. They're out there working pretty hard. Um, and like Stephanie said, you know, the message that we keep giving them is it's not about like Public Works Director or the City Manager or the Commission, all due respect. It's more, let's, let's provide to the city. Let's keep, we need to push forward and provide better to the city now. Um, because of roads, you know, I hate to say this, but I think on Sunday I came to town. I drove through town and drove, drove through a, a patch. And it was muddy and it kind of went down. And I'm like, man, this is a bummer. And I know, not that I didn't know, but I do understand what the citizens are do- are complaining about. I get it. Um, and so those types of things, we're communicating to the staff. And I think it's really helping them. I think it's giving them another extra kind of level of motivation to get out and work a little harder, stay a little late some days. Um, we've even had guys staying past, I mean, 5:00 out there doing some saw cutting and some other stuff. Oh, it's, it's, it's been good. I think the morale is really good and they're really, they got that message. Let's, let's do for the public, let's get these roads safe again.
Would you pass on to the crew, we appreciate their efforts greatly?
I'm sorry?
Pass on to your crew that we appreciate their extra efforts.
Absolutely.
And Jimmy, just real quick, I know this is on streets, but because Eddie is, um, the manager over weeds and drainage too, uh, some of the commission has come with some, um, concerns from the citizens. Can you address some of those, Jimmy? The weeds and drainage part that you're going, you're having crews do now?
Yeah, so with all the good things that Weed and Drainage is doing helping asphalt, we've got to keep in mind that their main work is ditches and basins. So if they're working asphalt and doing help, helping them out, the ditches are going to be kind of falling to the wayside a little bit. And that's been happening. Um, and matter of fact, this week, we've, we're hoping it'll dry out a little so we can get those guys out to do a couple of items, uh, one that, that I know that you talked to us about, um, Mayor. So we have to remember that. Um, and this also includes, you know, keep in mind, we have two asphalt crews. Two asphalt crews, one of our asphalt crews is our signs crew. These are the guys that go out and fix our signs, stripe our roads and different stuff like that. They're doing asphalt and they're doing a pretty darn good job of it. But the work that they normally do is not getting done on a consistent basis. And that includes weed and drainage. So Weed and Drainage is doing what they can. Um, I've even asked them to come in on Saturday and do some ditches and I think they're going to do that. They're gonna come in on Saturdays and run the mowers and get some of these ditches cleared out. I got a, um, I'm working with a contractor to get them to do some, some spraying, to get a, get that, this ditch is sprayed now, so that way in the springtime, they're not so big and not growing so quickly. And hopefully I'll get that proposal back soon, we can get those contractors out there to do that, so. But yeah, that's a good point, um, Stephanie, you know, with all the help that we're getting, some of the jobs that those guys are normally doing, they're not getting done on a consistent basis right now. So I would ask that we could be a little patient with them and we're doing the best we can, um, to get all the work done, best we can.
Yeah, I don't know about the rest of you, but I've been getting lots of calls about the ditches, the, I guess, the temple weeds or whatever they are in the ditches and the ditches not being cleaned and, and so I've gotten a few, a few, several, actually, I guess several really, calls about that, that's what he's talking about. And I just, I understand, I just, I have to make our citizens understand. And I think that for the most part, they do, they're patient, but one of them's like, "Oh, I've been going in there and cleaning it." Well, that kinda scares me too, because I'm not sure I really want them in there. Technically, they're not supposed to be in there, it's trespassing. And so how do you say, "Yeah, I appreciate you cleaning out the ditch behind your house, but don't go in there because you could be cited for it." You know, it is, it's a catch 22, but I know they're doing the best they can, I'm not upset about it. I just, I feel like if somebody calls me, I have to pass it on.
We have to address it, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, so.
Any more questions or anything?
I do have one.
Sure.
13th Street between Florida and Indiana? Yeah, do, is that, there a timetable on when that road is gonna get? It can't be patched, it's unpatchable, but it needs to be redone.
We'll look at the map, I don't know if it's on a water and sewer replacement program, but we can take a look at that area. Justin, do you happen to know if that area is on a, because some of these areas, um, sir?
It's 13th, right, not 12th, it's 13th, right?
I think it's 13th, it's gotta be, I believe it's 13th, it's east-west, yeah.
So Justin's gonna go up there, this is his, this is his baby right here. Um, if you guys would've seen this map when he started with it, it's, it's complete transformation. So this is a really, really cool tool, been really helpful.
So you said 13th Street, right?
Yes, I, yeah.
Yes, so that one's actually WSRP 003, so that one will be going out for design in January. And then hopefully, hopefully by June, give or take on the design, it should go out for construction.
Okay.
And that's gonna be all three of those, so that'll be 13th, 14th and 15th Street.
I get the most complaints is on 13th.
Yeah, and there's, there's quite a few that are involved in that one, so. Even over here next to the City Hall on 8th and, 7th, 8th and 9th Street. And then, uh, as well over here, Juniper and Maple.
What about, uh, what street is that? Hawaii from 10th to 11th right by the post office.
By the post office, so that one is actually, let's see. So that one's actually going to be, so the designs, it's already being designed right now.
Okay.
That one's gonna be done in January. So basically, once the design is done, construction, next one goes off for design. And it's just a periodically transition every time.
So we're looking spring of next year, possibly to get it awarded and...
February or March, um, give or take, so that one will be, definitely be in construction by then.
That one block of that road is just horrible, you know, the rest of it's not too bad, but that's...
And, um, as you can see, anything that you see on the color, just based off of the 002, 3, 4, as you go down, that's basically timing-wise on what's gonna be next.
How do we get access to this?
So...
We can get you, um...
Yeah, so I could, I could get a GIS Tony, um, I'll be able to get him to give you a read.
Or we can look at it periodically, just to come down.
If you can send me an email if you want access to it, we'll get, we'll get you all access, whoever wants it.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else think it's like incredibly refreshing to ask a question and go, "Oh yeah, it's in the design phase or it's gonna be..." Listen, I have been on this commission since 2016, I have never heard that response before, ever, honestly. I've never heard a response like that. So kudos to all of you, um, thank you for making it a priority, because I think everybody can agree that's probably number one or two of the complaints that we get is streets, so congratulations to all of you for, uh, setting the bar high.
One more quick one, the, the intersection at Florida and 10th, the concrete itself, not, not where y'all just fixed, but the concrete itself, is that on any kind of an agenda anytime soon?
Florida and 10th?
Florida and 10th.
At the moment, there is nothing that I've seen that's on Florida and 10th intersection.
I just, the last few times I've been through there, you know, that concrete's starting to fail. It was redone probably 12, 14 years ago, pieces of it, not the whole intersection, but, uh, you see a lot of failures in, in some of that right there.
The only, the only intersection that's gonna, that I know of at the moment on 10th Street is, uh, Washington and 10th. Once they get that, the reason why that one's kinda slowed down is because of the rain, so. But that intersection's gonna be redone, but, um, I haven't seen anything on Florida or 10th yet.
Florida and 10th, okay.
I don't think I mentioned that the patches that are on these WSRP's, these, these projects, um, we're not, we're staying away from them. We're not patching those areas, like I said, and I think I mentioned that, but I don't wanna reiterate that. So if you guys get calls on those particular areas, um, you know, we're not gonna be patching those initially unless it's something where it's really serious. I mean, we've had to patch a few, um, but we're really just trying to stay away and waiting for Justin to do his thing with the projects, because they're coming along really quickly. And, you know, we don't wanna patch over a roadway that's gonna be completely redone, so it's just double work.
And I think this is important to mention, this is why it was so important for the commission to pass the water rate, because these wouldn't have even been on this map as SMP projects, because we wouldn't have been able to afford them. We were already behind, I think we couldn't even get to 22, right? So again, a shout-out to the commission for, you know, making that hard decision, passing the water rate so that we can get some of these things done.
It's, it's working, I'm really excited about it, so.
Yeah, I believe that's all I have, um, I can show you the patch map, I can, yes ma'am?
I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to get the color coding, uh, you said you were gonna tell us what it represents?
I'll go to the back and I'll kinda point it out to you. And I wanna also explain to you that the patch colors, they were changed, um, for me, because I couldn't tell before, I'm colorblind. So they were green and red, and so I'm, I'm the Public Works Director, I'm trying to help manage these things, but I couldn't tell which ones were red and green. So, um, our GIS department changed these colors, so now we have three different colors and they're, they're working really well. So, um, I'll go ahead and explain that to you, ma'am, and I'll go back and I'll show you, just give me a few minutes, a moment. Okay, so a couple of things I wanna explain to you. Again, the water and sewer replacement program, we have different color codes. As you can see, all of the roadways, they have different colors, so these are on, uh, replacement programs. That means that the utilities and the, they're gonna get new utilities and repaving. So again, these patches are not being scheduled at this time. We have some striping projects on the, uh, on the map, um, so these projects, 24 is done, 25 and 25, um, Phase 2, they're in the design process and they're going to, we're gonna get some new striping. So you'll see those colors there, that'll be a big thing. I know we, everybody saw the, uh, state did the highway, the highway, and then we had a contract to do some miscellaneous roadways throughout the city, so that's been a big help. Down on the bottom, we have three different colors, so blue's not patched. That means these are the, um, the items that are still not being scheduled, they're not patched. We also have a red dot that was just incorporated, the red dot is a patch in progress, that means they're scheduled. So what we can do is... You can click on one, let's see where the item, and there you go. So when we click on a dot, you can see the information for each patch. It, um, has an address, uh, when these patches were turned into Public Works and the creation date. So that's a, I believe that's a in-progress, right? And it has an ETA, so that one, it's a little behind, ETA of 1028 through 118, Crew 2. Let's go to one that's been done, I like those more, so we'll click on to the yellow and that shows an address, which is Cherry Lane, um, beat patched on 116. So we've been putting a lot of this information, um, on all of our dots. So I mean, our pro temp, that's some of the answers to your questions, these three colors are, they signify, uh, you know, the, um, different areas that we... And this, this map has been really helpful for planning. And like I said, this map is also projected out in the Street Maintenance Department, so our employees can see it. And they can interact with it if they have to, they can see what's up next, um, you know, clicking on these dots, they can see when they're scheduled to do this patch. They know what crew they're in, so it's been really helpful, really, really helpful for planning and, um, and all of that stuff, so. Any questions on the map?
Anybody have any questions? It's pretty awesome. Justin did that, is that what I heard?
Again, you should've seen this thing before, um, he started it. It was literally like a spreadsheet with some colors on it, so he's developed it, um, quite a bit, it's...
It was Tony as well, correct? Tony from GIS as well, so.
Yep.
Gotta give him a shout-out too.
Yeah, and Tony, Tony got me these colors so I can see them better, so I'm really thankful to him about it, you know, that was really helpful. But yeah, Justin's doing a great job with this map, it's been really helpful.
And it makes sense.
And we, it gets updated every Monday, so for those of you who get access, uh, we're continuously monitoring this, but I believe, um, Justin updates it every Monday.
My assistant, her name is Kansas Gibhart, she works pretty hard on this map, she's updating, she's getting the work orders in, putting all this information in, um... She's been really helpful with it, working with Justin to get all the numbers, you know, accurate and, you know, the map is, I'd like to say that this map is 100% accurate, but it's not. Some of these patches that we've been out and looked at, they don't exist, so we have to take them off the map, which is a good thing. I mean, we don't have to patch that area, but then there's some that weren't on the map that we've encountered. So I would probably say it's pretty close to accurate, but we still, a little bit of work in progress, but it's, it's pretty close and it's been really helpful.
Wow, does anybody else have any questions?
So Commissioner Redden wanted access, anybody else?
What, what system is that in?
Yeah, I do.
How do we, how are we gonna access that, like?
So they'll send you an email and it's, it's web-based, so you'll just click in it, set yourself up a password and then you can just go to it.
Okay. Could staff...
I would like it, yeah.
Staff help set that up for us?
Yep, yep, we'll do that.
I'm not...
Yes ma'am.
It's, it's quite, it's really quite easy, once you have the link, you can just go in there.
App that goes on the phone or?
No, it's a web-based, but we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you covered.
I have another question.
Yes ma'am.
And, um, I know that I did get some information on, like the Phase 1 of the striping, uh, they completed. So when you get ready to go to Phase 2, will you announce that or point out that area?
Uh, Phase 1 of FY '25?
For, yeah, for the striping? It's been done, but I, I was just asking, when you go to Phase 2, will that be noted on the, on this map too?
Justin?
Okay. Justin can update on these projects a little better than, than I can, ma'am.
So, okay, are you talking about FY '25 Phase 1 or are you talking about FY '24? Because FY '24 is the one we just completed.
Yeah, '24 is completed, so Phase 2 is going into '25.
Well, no, so '25 Phase 1 will be the next one to go out. Yeah, so '24 was because it happened right before July, the design, so we had that at '24. But because of different striping projects, we divided them up into different phases for FY '25 for this fiscal year. So the FY '25, which is without the one on the parentheses, is right above the 2. That one is literally 99% completed on design, um, is, we're literally just making one markup and that's it. And then it'll be shovel-ready to go out for striping whenever, of course, the director gives me the go-ahead on that. And then FY '25 Phase 2, that one's in design at the moment. So that one, I'll probably get 30, well, actually, maybe 30% designed, maybe sometime in January for the Phase 2 part, because there's three different striping jobs up there.
So it looks like Cuba and Florida will be '25 Phase 1, correct?
Correct, yes. And technically, Florida intersection right there on First Street, technically it'd be First Street as well, so that whole intersection's gonna be redone, so.
On the phase that we just completed, or that y'all just completed out there on Lavelle, right, as you turn onto 70, all the turn arrows with one of those heavy rainstorms, it just caused it to just disintegrate.
Really?
Yeah, the, the turn, just the, actually, it was just the head of the turn arrow.
Okay, so usually when it comes to projects, I have, like even though they're completed, I have warranty inspections. So every month or two months, I go out and I check all my projects to see if I see any subs. So I'll definitely take a look at that because it is under warranty for a full year, so. But I do wanna let you know, every time a project's on there, we, uh...
Yeah, it started to deteriorate with that first heavy rain we had about a month, month and a half ago. And then I actually saw somebody over there spinning cookies and I think that helped escalate it a little bit, but...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, he was just sitting right there in the intersection spinning, I would've tore off down the highway. But, uh, just the turn arrows are disintegrating for some reason.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll definitely drive by tomorrow and take a look at it and see. But like I said, everything I double-check at least four times within the year, as I have my warranty checks. So that way, if anything goes wrong in that first year, we get it fixed, so. We're not having to spend more money on it and...
Cool.
So was I able to help you out with your answer?
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, I, I think you're gonna have to, I'll, I'll show you what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, got you, okay, I know what you're talking about now, huh, yeah, okay. You're, you're talking about the striping that you put on your card, yes. Yeah, so that's part of that Phase 1 '25, so that one's the one that's almost designed, which I should be done by this week with this, getting it back, so. So that one would be good. I know what you're talking about now, so. Yeah, that one's, be completed this week.
I can't see that.
For design, yeah.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I don't have any, I don't have a question, just more of a comment to Mr. Vargas. It was, it was refreshing to hear you touch on quality. I think a lot of times that get lo- gets lost when you're faced with 400 and some, you know, patches that need to be done. But at the end of the day, if you take the time to do it right, it's gonna last five, 10 times longer. So thank you for actually putting quality up there above just getting these done, because it saves money in the long run doing that, so. It's refreshing to hear you say that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our guys take a lot of pride in their work, um, they've been doing it a long time and even though they have a long, a big number ahead of them, they still take pride in making sure these patches are done correctly, so they, they last a while, you know, so yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, I, gosh, we've just done too much of that, haven't we? It needs to stop, needs to stop. I used to tell my kids, "If it's worth doing, it's worth doing right."
That's right.
Good to hear that, all right, anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on, we've got a lot to talk about, thank you so much for that, I appreciate it. We're gonna move on to, are we good? Oh, oh yes, you do, look at that, you're gonna come up here and talk about it, okay. All right, we're gonna move on to Item 7, discuss and consider the next steps for the Fund Center located at 3751 Mesa Village. We will do that and then for the next week, we can read on social media about how we're not doing anything with the funds. Okay, I'm just kidding, can I have a little humor, come on, anyway, moving on, go ahead.
All right, good evening again, so the Rocket Center, the Rocket City Fund Center, oh, everybody's favorite conversation. It's taken us, uh, staff a lot of time to get some valuable information in your hands, um, to be up here today. So I just kinda wanted to just do a quick overview and I haven't used this in a while, so give me one second. So the GeoBond passed in 2014 and I put the question on the ballot just so that everybody, you know, on Facebook, listening to us, can see what exactly was voted on. So that is the actual question, which I won't read it, you, everybody can read it, but that is what was actually on the ballot. Just because there's a lot of questions like, "Why was it done in Mesa Village?", well, it's because that's what was on the ballot. Here is the voter results, and I know this is, some of you already know this, but I just wanted to kinda start from the very beginning of the Fund Center. This was the results, it passed by, you know, six, 700 votes, so that's how it...
Okay, can I, can I just back up real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, but I am gonna read this.
Oh, sure.
Because we do have people watching online. The original question on the ballot in 2014 was, "Shall the City of Almagordo issue up to $6 million of general obligation bonds to be repaid from property taxes, for the, to be repaid from property taxes for the purpose of building, beautifying, improving, acquiring, constructing, equipping and improving land and buildings for public parks and related recreational facilities? Project includes a family recreation center to be located at Site 8 of Mesa Village." Okay, I just wanted to read that.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
And so of course, obviously, it passed because we have it. That's the actual little, from the actual official results. So as of today, this is the current balance of the bond, about little 1 and 5 million. Payoff is August of 2032, um, the building is 35,000 feet and we did go out for appraisal and appraised at 5.5 million. As we all know, the city was never officially notified via the contract, it says it needed to come to the city manager, uh, written. And we were notified November 30th as, via Facebook. Because we were never officially notified and other issues surrounding it, which I can't speak... Because we were never officially notified and other issues surrounding it, which I can't speak about, cause we're currently under litigation, that's kind of how we were notified. So just for the record, we are still under litigation for the breach of contract. So, post-closure events, um, we, pretty much, every department is involved in this. We have been maintaining the building, we have been spraying, we have been taking care of the weeds. We're trying, uh, they did the cleaning of the kitchen, we're doing road and control, um, utilities are active and under the city's name. So I know there's a lot of concern that this, the building's being neglected. It is not, we are taking care of it, monthly, daily, on a regular schedule. So last time we came to the commission, in May, we had these three options posed to the, um, commission, and the commission gave direction for staff to kind of, um, review all of these and come back with some more information. So our three options that we posed were to sell the property, to release a new RFP, or to have the staff, um, operate the Fund Center. So sale of the property, and this is where I might need Commissioner Paul to help. He was on the phone call because his expertise is in real estate, and as we do with any, uh, any issue we have, we ask the commission who's best, the commissioner who's best to help us understand some of this, to help us understand some of this. So Commissioner, um, Paul was on the call. There is different ways to sell the building. Um, it's a conventional sale, the type that we put a for-sale sign out there, and we put it on the market. We can sell the note, um, because there's not a current vendor in there, that's difficult, or not feasible. Or we can put it out to auction, which they were told is the most feasible option, because that gives you immediate feedback. The cons of all of this is there's no current vendor. Um, we don't really know what the profits are. We found boxes in the back of receipts, so if we have to go down that route, we'll probably have to have a forensic auditor, someone who specializes in going through all those receipts, because we still haven't been able to get accurate financial data on them. The business needs to generate at a minimum 400,000 to be a viable investment for companies to come in. And because all the, the realtors, they depend, that's not me, um, all the realtors depend on their sales percentage rate. We've had two companies mention that they wouldn't even take this on as a sale, because in the market, I mean, there's a lot of issues with the building in the sense that it's still, we still have it bonded, um, it's restricted by voters. At the market in, the economy in Almagordo is uncertain, and the use of the building. So in order to sell it and let them do what they want with it, they have to sell off, we have to sell it at the 5 million that we owe. That's not a feasible amount, according to them. They, they're saying we would take about a 2 million hit if we wanted to sell it, which would mean the city would be in, in the hole for $2 million. I, I put all that, so paying off the bond, that would lift the voter, uh, approval restrictions that we just saw. It would reduce property taxes if we paid it off, because it was being paid for by, uh, property taxes. And, but there is no, if we sell it, there's no guarantee that they're gonna leave it as a Fund Center. They could turn it to manufacturing, they could turn it to pretty much whatever they wanted. Commissioner Paul, do you have anything to add to this? You were on the call. Do you think, I don't, no, we're good, okay?
No, I'm, somebody has a specific question, they covered most of it.
Perfect. Option number two, a new RFP. So we have had a lot of interest from a lot of people, but once we tell them the restrictions, the rents, they kind of have different feelings about it. Becau, if you remember, our audit finding was specific to the Fund Center, because we didn't give a market value rent. So, we, as we all know, we went out for appraisal, you guys are tired of hearing me say this, because we have to lease or rent at fair market value. It was the Fund Center that was the issue, that brought the issue. So according to the appraisal, we need to rent it about $9 to $14 per square foot. There's the 26,000 to 40,000. Even if we go up 50%, it would still be, um, 13, 125 monthly, I'm sorry, that says annually, sorry. We have to document very carefully why we're not doing that for market, for fair market value, and the commission has to approve that. Other considerations, we can't offer our liquor licenses, because we're impending litigation, and litigation is ongoing. Option three, city-run Fund Center, and everybody cringes at this, um, all our staff anyways. City salaries, we're still restricted by what we can pay. Um, as, when you're in the private sector, you can pay what you need to pay, we're restricted. We still have 60 job vacancies, so turnover and filling these jobs are gonna be difficult for the city to do it. That would obviously affect the operations of a Fund Center. Now, I'm asking you to keep your mind open on this next one. After all this was said and done, we took several months to go through all these options, and we felt that we should give you another option. Now, I understand this is, because the way it was voted, it would technically be the voter's option to repurpose the building. So this is a concept drawing, um, we've had all of our staff look at this. We honestly feel that this is the most feasible option, that would make the best use of this building. Um, what would go into this building is a fire station. Eight, we do need a fire station on, um, the north side of town. Both, uh, Chief and DC are here to answer any questions as to why. Um, also in your packet, there is a letter from, Chief Ramirez, discussing why, we have been looking at getting a ladder truck on the north side of town. First it was, we were looking at converting, um, the one across from Betty Dare, and then we were talking about building one out of Mesa Village, and so this isn't a new conversation that we've had. I, I think it should be a public, well, we all think it should be a public safety complex, because it's big enough that it can house all of these different entities. Fire station code enforcement, we could take municipal court, put it out there. Um, a police substation, or next meeting you'll hear about a real-time crime center. We can get out of Oregon by getting city clerk, um, records and evidence over there, it's big enough. We can have a training room and, um, a Jeanette's group. Keep an open mind. Why a public safety complex? And so we need a ladder truck on the north side of town, as I said. Growth on the north side include a potential courthouse, apartment complexes, a hotel, and the sheriff's offices. Um, a building, and building a new fire station this size would be upward of $20 million. Pros of repurposing the building. It's better use of taxpayer funds. As it sits here, it's just sitting there, and we're still obligated to pay it. Doesn't matter if somebody's in it or not. The risk of going out for RFP is in another year or two, we're gonna be in the same, same spot due to not being able to offer the liquor license and the rent. This has better access to Holloman Air Force Base, so, um, there's potential for DOD funding. Redesigning the building and adding a bay for a fire truck is actually very affordable. And because public safety is right now on the radar for not just the state, but for federal, there is a lot of, there are numerous grants for public safety. And, uh, we've talked about should the city be competing with private industry, and so taking us out of this, we're not competing with private industry. Las Cruces is doing a fire station and it's rather small. Um, if you want the details, I'm sure one of the chiefs can fill you in, but they're paying 9.4 for a brand-new fire station, and it only has two bays and firefight accommodations, there's no administration office in it.
It's actually got 15,000 square feet, four bays, and a four-story training facility in it.
Uh, this one?
Yes.
Okay. We got some of our information from-
I've looked at the project when-
Okay, did you, okay, well, I, I believe you, we were looking, getting the information from sources, so.
It's a fairly large facility, so.
It's 15?
15,000.
Okay, so 15, that's still half the size of, of our building.
It's in a four-story training facility with some rappelling stuff and other things.
Uh, I don't know if you need to say that anymore. Um, the cons of repurposing the building, time and money. Voter approval is required, so, you know, because voter approval is required, we have two options. We can wait till the November cycle and put it on November 20, 25 ballot. Or we can do it in a special election, similar to what the schools did. If you recall, they did a mail-in ballot, and there's criteria for that. That would cost, we believe, approximately $50,000 from some of the information we got from the school. Concerns about reduced youth activities, but there is a plan or ideas. This is also another option that we wanna present. The building gets repurposed to a recre- recreation center that the city runs. No restaurant, uh, possible snack bar. It would have NBA regulation, basketball court, basketball courts, volleyball courts, pickleball courts, climbing wall, et cetera. We haven't really flushed that one out. The reason we haven't is, same reasons I said why we can't take a Fund Center in. Staffing is gonna be an issue, and because I believe we don't want to move the current rec center over there, this would be a second rec center, so the city would have a hard time subsidizing two rec centers, so the costs for playing those games and entry would be significantly higher than, um, our current rec center. And access is still gonna be the concern. So, looking to the future, every decision we bring to you, we do, we look at the big picture, we do it in what's in the best interest of the city, and we provide you the information that we can. So, looking to the future, there are possibles of activities for the whole family. Revitali, revitalizing, revitalizing downtown has been a big, um, project. The city and ministry have worked along three business owners who are already invested in Almagordo, and I'll give you some information about these. And that's just general information. Brad, they have the Broadway Fashion Building. Um, he already owns it, his name is Alex. This is some information, he has a, I don't know if he does Cruces Downtown, he has a business downtown in Las Cruces, he has, um, El Paso, they're both very successful. This is just some information on the, on both the company and the building. Zia Comics, um, he has the San, the White Sands Theater, he, Zia Comics is also in Las Cruces. Um, he's here in Almagordo, he wants to turn into, he wants to turn the, uh, White Sands Theater into a family center, E-Turner Mans, Comic-Con, movies, pop culture-type stuff. Um, I'm sure everybody knows about Dr. Moisey's building on the corner of the Avis Building. Um, it's gonna be a winery, restaurant, and event space. And the Nataatorium, it passed, we have a meeting, uh, item on the next agenda, that's also gonna be downtown, I mean, centralized. So, we have lots of options for you to consider. I don't wanna be in your shoes making these decisions, but we are providing all the information that we can. I just wanna know what, what direction do you want us to go? We have pretty much uncovered every stone, we have looked at every possible option. We've spoken to numerous people who are interested in it, to a point, but I just, this is not our decision, this is commission's decision.
I've got quite a few que, Mayor Proton, you can go ahead. I've got quite a few questions, I don't know how to go about that, on all the different options that are available, so, but, go ahead.
I'm actually going over the letter that the, uh, fire chief put on here, so that's what I'm looking at right now.
Okay.
You wanna go through all options?
Commissioner Paul, go ahead.
So, is it relates to option one of selling the building, what is it, what does it look like, what's the impact to the city? If, if that was an option that was chosen, the property sells at fair market value, right? You could take it to auction, there's a bidder out there, they offer, you know, you don't put any restrictions in terms of like a minimum bid. You see what's out there, have the option to review those offers that come in. Somebody offers 2.5, 3 million bucks. We're then left with that difference of 5 million and 90?
So if it sells, so it's about 5 million, just for simplicity. So if it sells and it's on the auction, we get that feedback, it's 3 million. We can't sell it, because there's a bond, so we have to pay the bond off in order to turn it over.
Right, so those, so that difference then would have to be made up from city funds-
That is correct.
-to pay that difference of whatever it sold for and what's still owed on those bonds?
Yeah.
Yes sir.
As far as option two, is there any world where the city is able to justify a lease to somebody if you took it out for RFP that is below the fair market value of that lease? And if so, what does that involve from the city's standpoint? Cause I mean, when you look at Almagordo as a whole, right, like, getting $13,000 for any space is pretty hard to come by, so.
So, yes, absolutely, that would be a commission, we would have to take, bring it to commission, and we would have to, um, in, in the appraisal, which we can share. I believe there are some, um, there's at least one building from Almagordo. They took, um, buildings from around New Mexico, same, similar size, similar demographics, and that's how they come up with the initial 9 to 14, where they, I think they recommended $12. If you would like to do it at 25%, that's about 6,000, so, between 6 and 7,000. Going lower than that is what caused issue for us.
Yeah, 100%.
So, um, that would have to be a law, a conversation with our auditors. You know, we're gonna do this full transparency, we'll even talk to the AG, it'll be a, it would have to be something that, it's a collaborative effort.
Okay. On that same option, it says the city can't offer the liquor, liquor license, cause there's pending litigation. If that litigation, when it, if that's settled, is that an option that's back on the table for somebody that's-
So the concern is the insurance still. Um, we have minimal insurance on a liquor license, but that is gonna be a concern. We no longer do the liquor, if you recall, at the, um, Civic Center, we no longer do it. Even internally, when we have our events, we have to go out for, and have a curry-noser, one of those do the alcohol.
Right. Um, option three, I know that you kind of mentioned there that, you know, city's understaffed as it is, but has the city looked into what the staffing needs would be to actually bring the operations of that in-house? How many people are we looking at having to have run and operate that? What's payroll look like? What would, you know, need to be met to just cover payroll, in addition to whatever expenses would be incurred for-
We have on a higher level, taking some of the payroll reports that we did receive, because although we haven't, excuse me, received financial reports, we do have some payroll reports. It depends on operations, it's gonna cost upward of a million dollars.
On an annual basis, to run and operate?
Have we reached out to Deming to see what their operating cost? Cause don't they still run theirs?
Um, I can't think of his name, I wanna say it's Bill, but I don't think that's right. I've, I've actually had lengthy conversations with him.
Cause they, they have a very similar situation. They built one, and, and I thought they brought it in-house, and they run theirs through, I think it's the county that actually runs it over there, but it'd give us a real close guess of what it would cost us to run it. And then, if we did run it in-house, the liquor license wouldn't be an issue. We could probably figure out how to utilize the city's liquor license if it's under us running it.
So we're not doing any liquor licenses right now. The only one we have is, is, um-
If we can do it for the golf course, we could probably do it out there, so.
The insurance. Grant is able to provide his own insurance, so that's where the issue is, is-
So, and then, I wanna, on Commissioner Paul's deal with the, the 25% on the lease, typically in the past, and this was former attorneys, I don't know how this attorney feels, but they said you could go to a lower cost of that if you can show the benefit to the community. So say we charged them 25% of what fair market value is, but we can say, hey, look, this is the benefit to the community for our children, the families, blah, blah, and that can use, be used in the agreement to offset the cost a little bit.
So according to our auditors, we have to have a real, so we, there is a way to do that. We have to provide a lot of information, but like I said, this is something we're gonna have to, if you wanted to go at the 6,000, um, we're gonna have to really work with our auditors, because they are the reason, the Fund Center is the reason we got thought of finding for not having a fair market value. And even at 6,000, it's not fair market value. I mean, you can see that's 25%.
You offset that by saying, hey, this is the benefit to the citizens as a whole, and, and for having the facility there, and, and, uh, you know, the attorney, when they structure the lease or, or the RFP, can kinda say, hey, these are, these are the, the positive things for the community that, that this is providing by allowing this lease to be that way. Uh, I know they've done it in the past, uh, so, but.
How, I don't, I guess my question would be, how is this a benefit to the citizens as a whole?
Isn't something to do?
Okay, but-
Mike was always busy when it was up.
I knew Evelyn was struggling.
So, um, on the audit finding for this, so if you have a for-profit company, operating this as a for-profit retail space, it is not a benefit to the community, and it can be-
How do we manage the golf course?
The golf course, he, we do profit sharing, so we own the building, he charges everybody, and we take a share of those profits. We don't lease him the building. We have a profit share agreement. So if you did a profit share agreement where you made the person- share agreement. So if you did a profit share agreement where you made the person come in, but again, we subsidize the golf course at a very high rate because of the profit share agreement. So technically, we pay Grant about a million dollars a year. Now, he has operating costs that come out of that, so he doesn't net, you know, he doesn't net a million dollars a year. But on our expense sheet, on our income statement, it looks like over a million dollars a year. So that's where the golf course is different because it's not a straight lease. But the, to prove to DFA that it's some sort of, you know, community benefit thing, like for the Plaza Pub is a good example. They have to log volunteer hours. They have to log community events. They have to log, same thing with Cope. We have to show, yes, we have to show that Cope is providing, you know, community outreach and everything like that. DFA is not going to approve that for a for-profit business that's running in a retail situation.
What was the reasoning why we didn't go off fair market value before, in the first place?
I was not here.
I wasn't, I wasn't here. I didn't live here.
Actually, I'm the only one that was here.
Ellen was here.
And so, so there was an opinion written by the former city attorney. It's about two paragraphs long that comes out kind of to where they got to that number. However, there was not an appraisal done and there was nothing. And that's one of the things that was documented in the audit finding was the fact that there was an appraisal. There wasn't anything to, to kind of go off that. They did some comparisons to other rent that they had found in other places, but it wasn't anything that tied directly to our building.
Yeah, but in, if we want to be more specific, that, we want to be more specific, that amount actually came from our former planning and zoning director who-
Right. He was, he was involved in it too. That's correct.
Well, he was involved in it. Boy, was he involved in it. And that's where that amount actually came from. It came from a planning and zoning director who, if we're to be perfectly honest, it appears that he had an ulterior motive, only we didn't know it at the time. And that's where that $2,000 a month came in. Because I can go back, and Nadia was here then actually, and I'm sorry to call you out. I know you're just here observing. But I was very specific with that because I was so shocked that we were only charging $2,000 a month. But I specifically asked the question, how, how do we do this? And I, I remember it as clear as day, them telling us, the building is only worth what someone is willing to pay for it. And that resonated with me because I was like, okay, well then I guess what, I guess that's, that's what we charge. And do you remember that? And she's nodding her head. For those of you watching, she is nodding her head. Yes, she remembers that. It was a huge controversy at the time because I couldn't understand that. The reason, the reason I justified it in my head was because I think what a lot of people, a lot of our citizens don't understand is this was never meant to be a moneymaker. You know, we were paying, this, this bond was passed in 2014. From 2014 to 2016, $200,000 of that money was spent and the dirt hadn't even been turned. So by the time we got it in 2016, there was really only 5.8 million dollars left. There really wasn't $6 million. And it was 5.8 million dollars that was absolutely wasted. And so by 2016, there was a fairly new commission. There were some people, Commissioner Sykes was, was on the commission then, Commissioner Baldwin at the time. But there were at least three new commissioners and we had 5.8 million and had to figure out how to build a family fund center. Why did we build a family fund center? Because the people voted for it. It's not about, at that time, for me, and I was brand new at the time, well, like I said, there was three of us that were brand new. It wasn't for us about, do we want this? Do we not want this? That wasn't the point. The point was it went out to a vote and the voters voted for it. So whether we wanted it or not was not the issue. I can tell you, as a private citizen, I did not vote for it and I did not want it. I thought it was a terrible idea. I still think it was a terrible idea, but that wasn't the issue. The issue was it passed. And as you can see, that's why I wanted to read the bond because I wanted, I want everyone to understand, the issue was that it passed. And from the time it passed till the time we actually decided to do something, we were paying what? $40,000 a month? $40,000 a month for two years and there was no plan. We were just paying $40,000 a month for two years. Add that up. That's a lot of money to pay for nothing, for no plans, no sketches, no, for zero. And so, so in 2016, we said, okay, well, we've got to get this thing built. I don't even think we started building until what, 2017 or something, or close to 2017, some, somewhere in there. And then we had to build it. And so we built it. And what we built, to me, looked like what I call, have you ever seen the little snack bar at Sam's Club? That's what it looked like to me. I was like, okay, so, so we have a snack bar at Sam's Club. We need to turn it into a Nordstrom's in order to make it profitable. And so that's what we did. It was a huge controversy. But, but when it came to finally awarding the, someone to actually run it, they were telling us, well, it's $2,000 a month. That's what the rent's going to be. But in my head, I'm going, okay, well, I guess that makes sense because we're paying $40,000 a month. We're never going to get $40,000 a month for that. Do you see what I mean? Like, we're never going to get that much. So that building was never going to be profitable. It wasn't meant to be profitable. It wasn't even meant for us to break even on it. It was a quality of life project that the voters voted on. I think for me, looking back on it, my issue is, I don't think the voters really understood what they were voting for. I don't think that they understood it. Because when you talk about private business, that does not make good business sense, right? It just doesn't. It, there's no way you can ever justify that. But that's not what we're talking about here. And so I'm sorry to go into that lengthy conversation, but it is a frustration for me. It is always going to be a frustration for me because our job was to take this money, these bonds, this money from these bonds that the voters voted on and turn it into a building. So now we're stuck with, honestly, we're stuck with the building and our decision is, do we continue to run it like a family fund center? Or do we do something different with it? It doesn't really matter. We are literally technically losing money every month. It doesn't matter whether the building is occupied or whether it's not occupied. We could charge $6,000 a month for rent, but we're still losing $34,000 a month just on paying these bonds. So it doesn't matter. It really doesn't. We're never, even if we charged the 24,000, is that what it was? We're still losing money every month. It doesn't matter. We are always going to lose money on this building because it was never meant to be a building that was going to pay for itself. So we have to be clear about that because people need to understand that we're losing money either way.
Yes, sir.
At the golf course, do we do that as an RFP with Grant or do we do it as an RFQ? Because he runs, I mean, and that was originally the intent, was this is to be set up exactly how the golf course is.
It's an RFP.
So, I mean, how do we get around essentially the anti-donation at the golf course with us supplementing him?
Because we do the maintenance part. He, the, he handles the restaurant and the golf pro.
And the pro shop part of it.
Yes. And the city maintains the, so when Evelyn talks about us subsidizing it, we're talking about also the ops, the maintenance operations of it.
It's, you know, that was the original intent, was it would be set up very similar to the golf course type situation. And then it turned into what it turned into.
Yeah, because there was no profit sharing in this contract. And that's what sets it so different from, from Grant's, is the fact that he runs all of the operations. But he comes in every day and brings the money in and deposits the money every day. And he says, just to use round numbers, we took in $10,000 today. I'm depositing $4,000 because that's my different percentages. And we have different percentages and all this stuff. Take a different percentage of the restaurant. We take a different percentage of the greens fees, take a different percentage of that. Yes, obviously, that covers his expenses because then what he keeps, we record as an expense.
How did, when Deming, and I don't remember how Deming set it up because they had a very similar situation where they contracted it out to have it run over there as well. How did they structure their agreement? Do we?
I, I've never seen Deming's agreement.
Okay. Because I know they did structure it, had it for a little while and then-
I did request their RFP for it, but I haven't gotten any information.
That was a number of years ago. And I think they still run it in-house over there.
But they didn't start out running it in-house?
No, they had an operator in the beginning for the first few years that ran it. I was just wondering how they got around the anti-donation and the audit findings and stuff on there.
So, and you're saying the original intent, I do know that you were on the commission originally when this-
Started, yes.
Started. And then you had that four-year break. Is there anything in writing about the original intent or is it just something that was talked about?
Well, it was talked about and it was, it was pushed to the public that way. You know, originally, it was supposed to be built right here where Albertson's is, you know.
Okay, but that's not what was on the bond.
It's because of a former mayor got involved in it and got it pushed out there. But the original intent was either at the old TGNY, I don't know if any of y'all remember where that is.
I do.
Or right here where Albertson's is built, which was the old IGA building.
But when it was, when it was put out to a vote by the voters, you were on the commission then, correct?
Former mayor, the former mayor got that tacked on there.
Okay, but, but I'm asking you, you were on the commission then, right? When it was put out to a vote to the voters. Did the commission not try to, because there's seven, there's seven people.
It was turmoil at that time because we, if I remember right, the manager had just quit. And then we had an acting manager in and it was, it was, and it got snuck in like that and-
But how did it get snuck in when there were seven commissioners that had to approve it?
Got it, got slipped on there that way. But like I say, it's in the past. We need to focus on what we're going to do today.
That doesn't, okay. I, I hear what you're saying and I hear that it's in the past, but that, I'm just telling you that that makes no sense to me. We could not do that today. There is no way with seven people sitting up here, we could sneak something in like that.
It takes four.
So I just wanted to go back to, I think Commissioner Paul still has questions.
All right. Go ahead.
Sorry.
So as it relates to option number four, has the city staff estimated what the cost would be to repurpose that building?
Yes, we have. I'm glad you asked. I, Justin has the exact numbers. I didn't bring the proposal with me. It's under $2 million to repurpose the building.
How much?
Under $2 million. I think 260 for design and about 1.4.
Did you say 2 million or 102?
So 2 million, under 2 million, 260,000 for design and I think 1.4 for actual renovation.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, I had those numbers memorized.
And how would those be funded? How would that be funded?
So we have a tax that is dedicated to public safety buildings. We would also look for grants. We would put in an ICIP. So there is money for, for public safety.
But then that would still have to go to a vote of the people.
If, if we repurpose the building, it has to go out for a vote because the voters voted on a recreation center. So to be clear, if we want to go to the beginning.
I remember it.
It says a family recreation center. So it doesn't necessarily say the bowling alley. It doesn't necessarily say a fund center. It says recreation center.
I mean, comments that I hear, I mean, I've got an opinion, but you know, obviously each of us commissioners are up here to represent the people in our district and the city of Almagordo. And I have had very few people, the comments have been, that have been made to me, city should have never been involved this, with this to begin with. But that's from people that are in business, the other folks that are, are maybe not running and operating their own business and understanding the dynamics of that and what the backend looks like and you know, why a city shouldn't be involved with this. Their comments are, we want that fund center. And so I think that's what a lot of us sitting up here on the dais are faced with is you've got a community that supposedly wants this. They voted on whatever the measure was at the time and passed it with a 60% vote. And so it's tough to sit up here and, and make this decision, number one, but to do what's in the best interest of the community as a whole. I still feel like there's some information that could be dug up to explore some of those options for an RFP. Is there any ways to get creative? You know, if we're going to dump, potentially, there's other funding sources for a public safety complex, but none of that's guaranteed. Maybe it gets to a point to where there's, you know, the city's got to move and it's got to come out of, city coffers to fund, changing it into a safety complex. What's the difference in selling that thing, whatever you can get, and shoring up the difference on what's due on those bonds and get the city fully out from under it? So I don't know if there's a way to, to look into that RFP and figure out are there ways to get creative? Is there a way to have somebody that could lease that space, that could get access to a liquor license, that could potentially turn it profitable, that for a period of time, their lease is structured in a way that gives them a lower lease rate in year, you know, for the first 12 months. And then after that, it escalates up. Once they get their feet under them, to be able to start making some type of profit. I don't think that the previous operator was at all concerned about what he was going to do to make that a successful place. He saw an opportunity at $2,000 a month for 35,000 square feet. He took, he jumped on it, ran with it, didn't care. COVID hit, claimed that couldn't recover from that. And that's, you know, what led to him just shutting the doors. He never had an interest in making that thing a big grand place. I've been there. Everybody in this room's probably been there and saw the quality and the condition of things in there. He didn't care. And so if you had an operator that cared, I think that they could turn that around and actually make it something that's profitable. But they got to be willing to get creative and think outside the box. So I don't know. Just my two cents and-
And I think that's why option number four is also a reasonable recommendation because that would be, okay, this is what you voted for. Do you still want it or do you want the city to repurpose it? But again, there's just, all the options presented to you. Yes, ma'am?
I, I just wanted to say, I know that, I haven't heard how people want to keep the fund center. So I'm just going to-
It's all over social media.
Well, the social media is not what I've heard.
I've got people texting me right now that their comments are, how can we keep that fund center? So I mean, there's people out in the community that want it.
I'm, I'm just saying.
And if, and to be fair, if you look at some of the social media comments, I've seen comments that say, let's just do something with the building. So I mean, balance both of them, you know?
Yeah, it goes both ways. I'm not disheving that.
And I think that what I have heard, that the fund center, if it had been a little bit more centrally located, would have benefited and it would have been more accessible to all of the citizens in Almagordo. So that's what I'm hearing. And so when I had been talking to some of the people, they said, it might be a good idea to start bringing things back where they're centrally located, where kids can have access to it. Because I'm just talking about district number five. I don't think anybody is trailing out to the highway to go and have a beer or to eat or to bowl. And most of the people that I know that are, are bowling, now, this was a bowling alley. None of the leagues are bowling at that alley. So most of the cost is being absorbed by the people who go out there. And it was just my, my grandson and myself out there. And I think we bowled two games and it was close. And, and I, I bought something for him and it was $50. So I'm just looking at, like I said, I don't know what you all are, and I'm not doubting it. I'm just saying that I'm not getting that same feedback. And the feedback that I'm getting is that people want something a little bit more centrally located, where everybody can enjoy, where the kids can, you know, the parents or they don't have to drive out there on that highway. So I'm, I'm just saying, I hear a lot of different things other than what, you know, maybe you and other districts.
Here, here's my issue. And this is, this is, I hear what you're saying, but everybody is dismissing the fact that the movie theater is out there. And the kids are getting to it. The kids are getting, see, this is the part where I get frustrated because I'm like, we're sitting here and, and this has been an argument. This has been an argument since they, they decided to build it. I will tell you, I was, when I came on board, I was like, okay, so we're building it at Mesa Verde. It was never a question. But this argument about the kids can't get out there. And I'm like, then how in the world are they getting to the movie theater every weekend? Because it's literally right next door. And, and I will tell you that, that my kids were raised here in Almagordo and I can't tell you how many times I drove to the- And 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 I will tell you that that my kids were raised here in Alamo Gordo, and I can't tell you how many times I drove to that movie theater and picked them up, and then I had to drive to the movie theater and, or drive to the movie theater, dropped them off, had to drive to the movie theater, pick them up again. That that argument doesn't, I'm sorry, but it just doesn't hold weight with me, because the movie theater is right next door. And I assure you that every weekend, those kids are figuring out a way to get out there and get back. Sometimes, I partnered with other parents, and they would drop them off, and then I would pick them up, or vice versa. So, that is not the issue. The other issue that I have with that is that I never, the way that the family fun center was built, it's not a rec center, it's a family enter, a family entertainment center designed for families to utilize, not to drop your children off, and then pick the, that's, that was never the intention of that particular building. That I could see, at least certainly when when we got involved with it now, was it the original intention? I can't tell you I wasn't on the commission then, but I can tell you that in 2016, when we finally decided to build this building, it was never intended for a place to drop kids off and then pick them up later. I mean, that that wasn't ever the intention of the building. It is, again, right next door to a movie theater that kids are dropped off at literally every weekend. I'm sure that, I I don't have children that age anymore, but I'm sure that they're still dropped off at the movie theater every weekend, and then picked up somehow, so. And as far as the price of, and and I want to go back to what Commissioner Paul said, I will tell you that when Jay Chen first came on board, literally, we sat at a fire station, he provided us with sample food, do you remember that? That we tried out, it was incredible food, it was amazing, you went to school in LA, you know what they have out there, that's where this man was from. I went to his facility in Los Angeles, I happen to have family in California, I went to his facility, I saw for myself what he was capable of. So, I I'm not sure that I agree that he didn't care, I do think that he cared in the beginning, I don't know what happened to him. I think he got a little too big for his britches, he got in a fight with his brother, who was the cook, and all of a sudden, the food went downhill, because the cook went away. But in the beginning, it was a nice facility, it absolutely was, and and it was good food, and I looked forward to going out there and eating with my family, and it was a great time. In terms of what he charged, clearly, we don't have any control, and if we go out for RFP again, we will still not have any control over what the operator charges. That's between him and the public. What I can tell you is, I think that, I think that the general public, the families that will be utilizing that, I don't think that they're, I don't think that they are much interested in paying a lot of money for that. And unfortunately, in order to operate a facility, in order, and I'm not saying that I don't disagree with you, because I would love to see it a family fun center, just for, just because there's so much time invested in it. But I don't think that our citizens want to pay, like you said, 50, I I can tell you, I took my grandson out there for his birthday, and it was him and three or four, or five of his friends, something like that, and then the rest of our family members by the end of the night. And my husband and I paid for it, by the end of the night, I think we were at about $400, to be honest with you, between food and bowling and all of the other things, I I think it was about $400. It's not cheap, it's not, and and I think as business owners, everybody understands it's not cheap to operate a business, and that was back then, it's even worse now. So, I really don't know what the answer is, but I wanted to address all those things, because I I do believe that in the beginning, Jay had good intentions. I just think that he, life got in his way, and and, you know, I'm not going to get into all his personal issues, but he had a lot of them. And I don't think he anticipated those in the beginning, and I do think that those personal issues came into play a lot, you know, with him. But but as far as all this other stuff, no, I don't agree with that, I, the movie theaters out there, the kids figure out a way to get out there every weekend.
We're getting a little off topic.
Well, but are we, we need to figure this out, we've got to figure out, like, what we're going to do with it.
Staff's asking for direction of which way we want to head.
I get that, but but if we don't, if we don't cover some of these issues, and we just decide to go back out for RFP, we could run into these issues again, so I don't think it's off topic. I think it's important that we look at all of the pros and cons, and there were a lot of cons with that building when we went out for RFP, so.
Like I mentioned in May, when when Steph brought this to us before, you know, let's put out an RFP, i- if we have two or three different responses, and we don't like them, we can always reject it and go to Plan B, which is either sell it or bring it in-house. So, you know, logically, it it won't hurt anything, I honestly thought that that was the direction we were going, we were going to put an RFP out, see what kind of response we had, and if we didn't have a response, then we knew what we needed to do, we either sell, or we bring it in-house.
It's it's okay to spend $40,000 a month on.
We're spending it right now.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, it's okay to keep spending that.
Well, that's not the point, though, it's back in May, we asked them to do this, and it hasn't happened, is the deal.
So, we're not spending anything.
Say that again?
I mean, the residents of Alamo Gordo are spending the money, but the city coffers aren't, I mean, in essence, it's not like we're losing $40,000.
It's, you know, right now, when we're looking, we already know what the results are on the RFP, if we send it out, we're not going to get what we need in order to keep that center going.
It was never intended to.
But it was never intended.
Pay for itself.
$40,000 a month?
It's it's like the the rec center, I'm going to use it as an example, we have to supplement that, it's a quality of life issue for our residents. We provide that for the residents, knowing that it costs us a lot more money a year to run it than what we generate.
But you.
This is a very similar deal.
Data says.
The golf course is the same way.
200 people, okay, the the golf center, the golf course too.
It it costs us more to run it than what we generate.
But you didn't have that number out at the, at that bowling alley, you didn't have it out.
But all I'm saying is, is put the RFP out, see what responses we have. If we don't get any responses, then we know we need to go to a different direction, that's all I was saying, so.
Well, even if we send out the RFP, we already know how much money we're going to be losing every month, because she gave us two, the top and the bottom part.
It it doesn't matter, we're losing the money either way. If we turn it into a fire station, we're still paying the bond.
But it's more functional. It it actually would save us money to go ahead and do.
It would cost us an additional 50,000 for a special election, or wait two years till the next November, to the next election cycle.
Well, let's do it.
Doing an RFP will.
You're spending $40,000 a month anyway, what is 50,000 to do an election?
What if the election fails?
What if it doesn't?
If it does, my thing is, if we, it doesn't cost staff a whole lot of money to put an RFP out. If we don't like what we see come in, we can always reject it, and then go a different direction.
Okay, but that's why.
Minimal amount of money to do an RFP.
That's why I went over all that, because if we go out for RFP, that's why I said, no, we're not getting off topic, because if we go out for RFP, we need to learn from what's happened in the past with our prior operator. We need to learn from, well, no, I.
But but we we asked them to do this six months ago.
We need to learn from that, we've lost.
That's $240,000. We asked six months ago to put an RFP out.
I get it, I'm not saying, don't do it, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm telling you is, is if we do that, we need to be much more careful this time, because clearly, and I'm telling you that the operator that we hired was not, he was not, he was a good business per, I don't know what happened to him, but but the due diligence was done. And so, I'm not sure what else we could have done, so if we go out for RFP again, we need to be prepared, and we need to make sure that we, I want to say, do it right this time, but I felt like we did last time, so that's my only concern. I'm not saying, don't do it, I'm saying that my concern is that we're going to be right back in this position again, if we, if we don't.
We could be very, very lucky and get an operator like we have at the golf course that's been here for 20-some years.
We could.
And it has a passion, has it been longer than that?
Like 30.
30 years, he's been out there for 30 years, he has a passion for running a golf course, and it's a very, very nice facility.
But I've sat down with him, I've sat down with him, and he's not, well, I don't even want to go, I'm not going to go down that road, I I'm I'm going to just say that.
What?
So, I I just kind of want to, just to be fair to staff, because, just to be fair for, to be fair to staff, it was to bring information back. Because of the pending litigations, we weren't sure what our options were, so, just to be fair, staff wasn't just sitting there like twiddling their thumbs, trying to, we had to.
You had already drafted some sort of an RFP?
Yes, I, yes, I worked on it with Barb.
I don't know if this one would be an RFP or an RFQ, it'd be one or the other.
Yeah, we, I, me and Barb were working on an RFP, it's not finalized, but yes.
Because I think if you do it, I think in the past, if they do it as an RFQ, then you have the 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 operators, they come in, and they they say, here's our qualifications for running it, and then we can go and negotiate with whoever has the highest qualifications to run the facility for us. So, it'd be a very, you know, we could do it either way, but that's what I would personally like to see, and if we don't have anything that looks quality, then we reject everything, and we either put it up for sale, auction, or we look at bringing it in-house, that's that's the only options we have.
I mean, because I I've heard the same thing like Nick said, I've only heard that people want something to do. That's what I hear, not, yeah, I've been, I've heard people talk, oh, I guess we're getting a firehouse now, and I'm like, I don't even know what you're talking about.
I haven't heard firehouse, I got an email from somebody that said that, I guess the buzz was that we were turning it into city and county offices, and I don't even know where that came from.
Well, I also heard that we're turning it into a strip club too, but.
Oh, well.
Besides the fact, I mean, I'm just saying.
I'm sorry, but I am vehemently against that one, so.
Well, yes, I'm just saying, it's it's been out there.
Option number six.
So.
I feel like that's bad juju, I don't know. Okay, so, so all I'm saying is, I I don't have a problem with it, and if if this is what the citizens want, then this is what the citizens want, but it's consumer-driven, right? So, the only way it's going to work is if people want to pay for it, and we do not have control, just so we're clear, we do not have control over what an operator charges. So, we can go out for RFP or RFQ, we can hire an operator, but we cannot put in that contract, you're only allowed to charge this month, and you need to figure out how to make it work.
And I agree with that, I, in the same sense, but it's not cheap to go to the movies, it's not.
Again, I don't have.
I mean, so, and to say that it costs too much because of this, I see people spend 2, $300 to go to a concert in Albuquerque, but another 200 or 300 on top of that for a hotel room, and not bad at all.
But you cannot make somebody.
I agree.
Patriot, or or what is it, what, you can't make somebody utilize the family fun center, and all I'm saying is, it is consumer-driven, and so we just need to be aware that part of the reason it fails is because people don't want to pay for it. And it is expensive, it's going to be expensive.
I think qualified operators are going to do their due diligence, though, and they're going to do market studies, and if they can't find that the demand's here, you're not going to get anybody that submits anything to an RFP or an RFQ that goes out, and so I don't really see the harm in putting it out there to just test the waters. It's short-term, it allows us to fill out and see if there's any interest.
I don't, I don't have an issue with it, I would like to, I I want to see it succeed, we spent a lot of money on it, it's not, it, I'm just, maybe I'm a little gun-shy, but but I only mention that because Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tim McDonald made the comment about how much it costs, and I've heard that from a lot of people, I've seen it on social media, and I'm simply saying that we all need to be aware that you can't, you can't make, you can't force an operator to charge a certain amount. So, we need to be aware that it is consumer-driven, and whether it succeeds or fails, depends partly on the operator and how well they operate, but it's also going to depend on our citizens and their willingness to utilize the facility and to pay that price, that's all I'm saying.
And and we have to look at all of the citizens, not just the ones who have the money that can go out there, it's the people that want to go to, everybody wants to enjoy it, everybody wants to.
But not everybody can go to the movies.
But some of them.
I mean, it's, that's, that, I mean, it can't really be your driving factor, is who can afford it, who can't.
But you're, you want to make it affordable for all of the citizens.
We can't make it affordable.
We can't do that, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's not the topic of the, the issue at hand here. Kim, can I ask, i- is it possible, in addition, whatever the the commission decides to do this evening, for given staff direction, but is it possible, if it's the RFP route, can you, can city staff also get some numbers together as far as what does it look like to run this in-house? I think being able to present that info to the public of, this is how many positions we would need, this is what the payroll costs are going to be, I don't know if the previous operator had provided any, you know, just detail or high-level expense numbers of, this is what electric, you know, what's it going to cost to actually run this thing? But so that all options can be weighed and exhausted before trying to go to some other route and pivot to do a a public safety complex. I think that having that information, and then, sorry, one second, here, pull this up. And then also, as far as for considering to repurpose it, what are the true costs going to be? Because we can say today that it's 1.5 million, and we turn around and this project doesn't come to fruition, and now we're at 2.8 million or 3 million bucks to do what, you know, the the intent was at the time when the commission voted on it, if that's the case, and so.
So, I mean, just to answer that question, we did get an engineer, an actual engineer that works on our project, so the cost at the 1.4 million is the cost today.
Okay, can we get a breakdown of what that is then, as far as across all the updates that are looking to be or proposing to be done, in terms of adding bays for trucks in there, spaces for offices, spaces for courts, whatever other stuff, I can't remember what was listed on there?
I think Commissioner Paul's, he's kind of right on the topic, you're almost killing two birds with one stone there, you're going to get the RFP numbers, and then you're going to get the in-house numbers, and bring it back to us kind of all at the same time, and then we'll kind of know both options.
So, you want the actual RFP that is going to go out?
Just, or.
Or I guess, let me ask this question, do you want us to actually go out for RFQ and then have the, bring it in-house as a Plan B? I mean, I.
My interest in the in-house stuff, and I don't mean to speak for Commissioner Rerden, is people, if if we don't, as commissioners, ask for what are the details of each of these options, then how can we best decide? And you guys have presented some info, but I don't know what it costs this, you know, from the city's perspective to bring this in-house. Okay, we need a lot of employees, we can't hire employees now, well, what is the numbers, the data that backs that up, that makes it hard to achieve, right?
I know that just on the salaries part, it was about 300,000 a quarter, I believe, with the, with the salaries and the benefits, if I remember the tax paper, that was just for the employees' part of it. So, that includes the beverage servers, the waitressing, the bowling alley, all of that, that was about, and it fluctuated, of course, depending on how busy it was, but I think the average was about 300,000 a quarter for just the salaries piece of it.
I'd like to see that that info, and, you know, like I say, the RFP, RFQ doesn't cost us anything to put it out, I mean, just a little bit to advertise it, see who responds, you know, if if we get some national operators that respond on it, you know, what's it hurt, it doesn't hurt anything to ask.
So, I, kind of along with Commissioner Rerden, I think that would be a good option, to just actually put that RFQL, RFP, and then come back, here's what we got, or here's not what we got, and we also can do this. Because even, just because there's an RFP or RFQ out, that does not mean that you have to accept it, so if if that's the direction, I think that would probably be the best option.
Yeah, if we we brought the RFP in, we get somebody that that responds to it, and then you have the numbers for the in-house, that would be the only way that we could dictate what is charged, is if we brought it in-house. And and the city runs it, then we could, we could do it, because we, we're nonprofit, so we don't have to make a profit at it, and then we could keep the cost a little bit lower if they brought it in-house. But, like I say, it's, like, I see a lot of social media posts about, hey, when's this going to open up? I do get a lot of phone calls about that, hey, when's the bowling alley going to open up?
And just so, to be clear, like, we were in litigation, so this is the, when we're, I think we had a executive session a month or two ago, that's when we are like, okay, we we feel very confident in where we are, so this is why we are able to move forward. We're not through the litigation, so we're not just leaving it there because we don't want to do anything, just to make that fair and on the record, it's, there is litigation, we are trying to work through that, but we do feel confident in where we're at on that, to be able to do one of the five options.
I don't have any problem with going out for RFP, I don't think it's a bad idea. Again, I'd like to see it succeed, I don't know about that in-house thing, we can't even fill all the positions we have, so, that one kind of, but whatever, I mean, the 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 issue is going to be if we say, okay, we're going to take this in-house for sure, we've got to make sure we can hire people to run it, and that part, that makes me a little. And that part, that makes me a little nervous.
So we will try and get an RFP or RFQ, we'll work with Barb and Evelyn to see what's the best route to go. Hopefully, by the end of the year, first thing in January, so we can get some more information quickly. Because like I said, we were waiting, we feel good, we can move forward. Does that sound good to everybody?
I'm alright with that, I'm good with that.
I wanna say one thing, I've been trying to say something. So I, I, I am a bowler, so I don't know if anybody knows that.
I thought you were a golfer.
I, I do everything. So, um, you know, the, the, the league secretary actually approached Jay, Mr. Chung, um, Chan, whatever his name was, about having leagues out there, and he said absolutely not. So he was approached, he denied, uh, any leagues. And I will tell you, there's a lot of people that would bowl leagues here in town because they can't get on the base. The base has, I believe, four or five leagues a week. And there's 20 lanes running, 16 to 20 lanes, 10 people a lane, and they all pay 15 dollars a person every night. So...
And then, but I heard the base was gonna, was, well, I think, if I remember right, Colonel Etheridge was going to do something, I don't remember what it, what, but he was going to make it accessible to all the leagues.
So, you have to have base access.
No, but he was gonna give them base access for that.
You have, you have to pass a background check.
You can't be a felon to go in there.
Hey, listen, I can't help that part.
So, when, when, when they passed that deal, they had every lane full, and then they came in and said, to be on the base, you had to have a background check, and, and it was almost cut in half, right off the bat.
I think you'd see a lot of kids leagues too, uh, for me, uh, again.
Absolutely, and it's, and, and when an owner says, I don't want your business, that's a problem.
Yeah, well, and it wasn't supposed to be, that's a whole other story. I don't even wanna talk about him anymore, but I get it.
So, I just wanted to make that comment because there's not a bowler in here except me. And, and everybody out there wants that fund center.
Yeah, no, I, again, I don't disagree. If we wanna go out for RFP, I think we should try that first, because that, that was the original contention, I guess.
So that will be, that will be what we'll do. Like I said, we will bring both of those, almost Simon's tales, we will put out the RFP, RFQ, whichever one we decide to go to, um, and then bring back what we have or haven't gotten. And we'll try and get that here.
Does that need to be in the form of a motion?
No, it's just direction.
No, it's not a motion.
And then at the same time, we'll, I'll look at the reports better, I'll try and get ahold of Demme again, and then we'll move forward from that point. And so hopefully in the next 45 days, we'll have some, something out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item eight. Consider an act upon approving the construction of a new naderatorium with sprung structure. Um, Belinda is here.
Can we take a short break and use the restroom maybe?
Sure, it looks like that's happening. We're gonna take a break, and then we'll move on to item eight.
We need to talk about the nautatorium. We still have a lot to cover.
Let's do it quickly. Let's do it quickly.
Hey.
This is nothing.
I remember when we used to stay here till midnight.
I know. We're gonna do better.
Oh, and get nothing done, by the way. Nothing. Okay. All right. Item eight. Consider an act upon approving the construction of a new nautatorium with sprung structure. We have lots of people that are going to talk about that, so.
Well, we don't all need to talk, but we're here. You need to answer questions. Mayor, Mayor Protown Commissioners, Acting City Manager. We're here again to, well, actually, we're just here to ask approval for the new nautatorium with the sprung structure. Because I, you should have, I don't know, a ream of paper about that deep on all of this information.
Since the proposal's been passed, obviously, the four million, where does the other, was it eight, seven?
So it's the, well, it's the tax dedicated that we will go out and get, they'll, similar what we're gonna do for the water. We'll go get it bonded.
Yeah, so we have our financial advisor. So when they ran the numbers for us, we had them run it at six, fifteen, and twelve. Fifteen years, twenty years for both of those, six, fifteen, and twelve. So we have the four million dollars in cash, basically. So my suggestion would be to look at the funding for the twelve. So if we, if we do a twelve million dollar loan with the four million dollars cash, that gives us sixteen million dollars to design and construct the nautatorium. So if we do that at the twenty-year debt service, that'll give us about nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year that we'll have to pay in debt service. The gross receipts tax that was rededicated is budgeted this year to come in at one point one million dollars. Over the last several years, it's been one point two four, one point seven five, or, I'm sorry, one point one seven five, one point one four, one million, and then another one million. So doing the twenty years for the twelve million, we feel that we'd be comfortably able to cover that debt service and that we would then have a little bit of excess for, you know, other things. So that's kind of the options we have. The fifteen, if we did the fifteen and added the four to it, that's a little bit out of our price range, but that would also give us nineteen million, which I think is probably more than everybody here is kind of interested in. We've hovered around that, you know, fifteen to sixteen million dollar price tag. And then, of course, we did the six million dollar one, and we added the four million dollars to that, that gives us ten million. That was under the initial estimate, because the initial estimate was right at the twelve. So, and then, of course, if there's a different combination that comes up tonight, we can ask our financial advisors to run that, but I think the twelve kind of gives you an idea of what's kind of our upper ceiling on debt service.
And what does that do to our bonding, our debt service later in the future?
It doesn't impact, so it's not a bond. It's, because it, it doesn't count against our general obligation, because we're not paying for it with property taxes. So we still would have our ten to twelve million dollars that we have right now in general obligation bonding capacity. We would still have that, and obviously, it would grow as we did it. Because it's a dedicated tax, and we're paying it with a dedicated GRT, it's not gonna affect our borrowing ability if we were wanting to go out and borrow something, like, obviously, the one that we're coming back with in December is the water rate loan is, is close. Doesn't affect that, because that's user rates, and this is a GRT, so, and it keeps that general obligation open.
What do we do in the event, you said that the tax generates about one point one, one point two a year. What do we do in the years if we have a little bit of an economic downturn and we don't generate enough to service the debt?
If we have that, then, you know, we still are required to service the debt, so we'd have to use either another GRT, or you would have to go out and increase the GRT rate. It's tied to GRT.
As you said, we were, for a twelve-year, or twelve, twelve million dollars for a twenty-year note was nine hundred something thousand.
Nine hundred, yeah. It's, it's about, it starts at nine hundred and twenty thousand. The highest it gets to is nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, so it stays.
So we got about a two hundred thousand dollar buffer?
Yeah. And based on what the, the financial analyst, it would give us about two hundred and thirty thousand excess revenue a year.
What if we borrowed ten, ten million plus the four?
I don't, I don't have that in, in my hand. I only, we had only at that time asked them to do six, twelve, and fifteen, so I'd have to go back and ask them.
That way, it gives us a little bit more of a buffer.
Yeah. I mean, you know, obviously, it's gonna be less than, you know, if we're doing ten and having fourteen total, then your debt service is probably gonna be closer, you know, probably eight fifty, eight, yeah.
And then, one other question that popped in my mind is, because when I was a kid here, we always had two pools. The location that we looked at building it down here, where the basketball goals are, what if we went down here, either in Washington Park or down here at the end, past City Hall down here, right before you get to First Street? And, I know this probably isn't on y'all, but, and built it in a little bit different location rather than by next door to the existing one.
I'll let you talk on that, because we were actually just recently having a meeting talking about the location of the pool, and so.
So part of the reason we're going where we are is to keep our recreational facilities tied together, so that if you have a family come, maybe you have some kids that want to swim, and you, maybe dad and the sons or whatever wants to go play basketball, they can still literally park in the same parking lot and, and use the facilities. It's not like having to go halfway across town so the family can participate in different activities. They still have all of our recreational, our family recreation center activities are still all kind of in a central location. So that's the reason for that. But we're also designing it in the eventuality that we, if we expand on either the swimming pool or decide to go with a bigger recreational facility, say court space or whatever, we can add on to that sprung structure and go north with it, because our rec, our current rec center is getting older. So we, we're trying to plan for those eventualities and not kind of box ourselves in with no way to do future expansion. So that kind of keeps all of that, and, and we're trying to do, like, our pickleball and our tennis courts and all of those things, kind of keep them in a, that area. Washington, it's not that we won't ever do stuff down there, but we, I, I'm trying not to compromise, I'm trying to protect as much green space as I can. So if we start taking potholes out up here and there of our green spaces, and this is all highly used for, you know, soccer and things like that, we will be, unfortunately, eliminating some of the soccer fields up here, but that keeps all of these down here intact. We're not taking a chunk out of the middle of those.
So this will actually be built just south of the existing basketball courts? Or will the basketball courts go away?
The basketball courts will remain until or unless we do a big expansion.
So it'll be just to the south of the basketball courts?
It's, 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 yeah. It's, it's past the bathrooms further south.
I just, when I was a kid here, you know, we used to have Washington pool that kind of sat over there, just right over in there, and that, that was just popped in my head.
Right. And, and, you know, we have other activities in Washington now, you know, and if we do a nautatorium in Washington, I think we'll end up boxing ourselves in there also as far as any kind of future expansion. So, you know, because we have the, the bootsole court, we have the skate park, which we'd like to actually do more with the skate park to give more things there. So we, we have a lot of stuff there already.
I think that the question tonight is whether we're gonna go with a sprung structure or a brick and mortar. Is that, is that what we're looking at right now?
So we put the sprung struc, the sprung structure on there.
All right, so.
I did get to go to Red Hawk this weekend and played in the rain, but it's actually a really cool building. It really is. But, yeah, so.
Did they have any, did you talk to anybody?
No, I, I didn't even get a chance, because we were trying to just get out there and freeze and play, so.
Yeah, so when we did the field trip to Red Hawk, we actually got to speak to the person who manages and maintenances all of those facilities, and he was just a wealth of information. Commissioner McDonald, or Mayor Protown McDonald went with us, and we had a lot of questions, and they had a lot of answers, and pretty much the takeaway was, they love that building. It's the lowest maintenance thing they've ever had, and it was supposed to be temporary fifteen years ago. And they built new maintenance buildings right next to it, the brick and mortar maintenance buildings. They've already had to repaint them, and they've already had to do roof work on both of those buildings, and those buildings are less than seven years old.
I mean, I, honestly, I didn't see any issues with the building. I didn't see any fading, no tearing, no, I mean, it was, it was actually kind of cool.
They're pretty neat.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we got the, the, if I remember right, the, the estimates, you needed about fourteen million to do the facility how you had it designed before, right?
So we need to get it finalized. Those were proposals, so once you approve the sprung structure, we will get the final design finalized, and then we have to bring it back for, once we go out for the loan. So, yeah, as of what we had, I think we had about a fourteen million, I think that, that was right.
Fourteen, two or something.
Roughly. And so with the sprung structure and, you know, once, now that we're nailing down our definite numbers, that'll also, the sprung structure will allow us to potentially have a slightly larger pool, and that's, you know, we're trying to get the most mileage out of our dollars and have the best longevity for the whole facility. So that's, that's where we're at there. Those are preliminary designs also that we submitted earlier. That's, that was very preliminary, so now we can buckle down and, and really get the true design.
I, I, I read through, is it eight lanes or is it six?
So the current concept is one pool that has eight lines, which will facilitate competition for the high school. It's got plenty of deck space for small team competitions, but also satisfies the need for our community that wants to do fitness in the pool, doing lap swim. So eight of those, and then there's a small, it's not a river, but it's an opening that goes into a recreational area that's shallower, that'll facilitate and actually open up a lot more space for our little ones, the eight and unders, that we can't really facilitate in our current pool, because it's too deep, so.
So it's gonna be eight lanes?
Eight lanes in one area, and then it kind of flows into a recreational area that'll have some built-in water features, and it'll be, it'll facilitate more of the recreational side.
And it's just a walk-in area?
Yeah, it's just like an open area. It's on one pool, so there's just one system, one cost to maintain the pool versus two systems.
And then we don't have the need, because it has the zero entry, so there's no need for the ADA lifts, because we could get an approved wheelchair in or whatever other devices that we needed. I mean, it's, we're trying to make it as accessible for the, the greatest amount of those.
Well, and we have children that are disabled. It makes it, at least they get to utilize it, so.
Yeah. Lots, this will be a much more accessible.
Because we faced that same thing when Kids Kingdom, of course, it was burned down, and when we went to rebuild it, it turned out that this was better after all, because then kids that were in wheelchairs or disabled were able to use it as well. Where the old, the old structure, I guess nobody thought about that, so I like this. I think, I think it, it's just one more way to make it citizen-friendly. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve?
One more question on it.
Okay.
Like, when we send stuff over to, I think it's ESA that's doing the design on it for us or whatever, but are we gonna try to stay within that, I mean, around that fourteen million dollar, I mean, or are we just gonna go design this Taj Mahal of a?
We couldn't afford a Taj Mahal.
You guys are gonna be like, ooh, we got sixteen million to spend, and, I mean, are we?
No, no, we're gonna leave, because in case the costs go up, we are well aware of what the costs are. We're gonna try to stay, well, yeah, because we want to leave a contingency in there in case something comes back and the costs are more, because we did get this designed probably a year ago, so.
And the same thing with the debt service, because that's really the two avenues we're looking for tonight. Approve the sprung structure so they can go finalize the design, approve the amount of money, so I can go back to John and say, give me the final debt schedules for fourteen million dollars or ten million dollars or whatever.
Because that's kind of my question is, is, you know, do we go borrow ten? Do we borrow twelve? You know, we already have the four.
No, we, we've already discussed that, that, that's the guidance we're looking from you guys tonight. If you're saying that we want a fourteen million dollar sprung structure, then that gives them their guidance to go finalize their design, it gives me the ability to go back to John and Chris and say, okay, we're looking for ten, run the new numbers.
So what is the reality? Fourteen million, is that realistic then?
Yes.
We can make it be realistic.
And that, the extra, the two is contingency in case.
Because you need a number tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can get started.
And then, at the next, the next time we bring this up, then we can talk about the loan and how we're gonna?
Yeah, so once you approve tonight, we will go get on the, with our bond, with John and Chris, and they will get with ESA, and we will have, next time you'll see it, we'll, it'll be the loan.
Because then we can have a final package with a final design with a, this is how much, this is how much is in contingency, this is what we're putting out to bid.
So those concept drawings that you guys brought forward to us on that last time, those were right around fourteen million? Plus or minus?
Plus or minus, yeah.
And then, if it comes in a little higher, then we can always value engineer it down a little bit, or?
Yeah, we can, we can look at, you know, base bids and additive alternatives of things that, these are the must haves, and these are the, be great.
Did you guys discuss, like, the, you know, the sprung structure's basically over the pool, and then you're gonna have those other facilities that are kind of built, are those gonna be sprung structures as well, or are they gonna be a brick and mortar type building?
So I'm, I'm not sure which part you're talking about. Are you talking about what houses the pumps? Are you talking about?
There was, those areas, it looked like there was, on his, I don't have the picture right here, but.
Locker room.
Yeah, the locker room area and.
In the, in the original design, he had added like a, a brick and mortar facade essentially.
Kind of off to the one side, wasn't it?
Yeah, so we're, we were trying to get the most mileage, and we can actually do all of that inside of the sprung structure. We don't need to have a special extra part of the building for offices or for locker rooms, because it's, we can do all of that inside of that sprung structure.
So you can just do one large building and then break it off?
Yeah, not have to have weird tie-ins. Yeah, and, yeah, and it creates, it's all one nice unit without having to have these, kind of making your building look like it's had cups, you know?
What's everybody's thoughts on the dollar amount?
I think it's right on, and I would like to move to approve this proposal.
But, but what amount? Are we gonna go look at having staff borrow ten or borrow twelve?
Their recommendation was if we go with this proposal, then they'll bring back the figures, and we'll vote on it.
We're recommending a, stay about fourteen thousand, fourteen million.
Fourteen thousand is good.
So.
No more than fourteen million.
We have an excavator and, okay, so.
So fourteen million.
Right. And we know four million of it is coming from the re, the re, how do we say that? The dedication.
We're looking at borrowing ten million, correct? Ten or twelve?
At ten, yeah.
Yes.
We will bring back a ten and a twelve, just because, just because.
Rates change, and that way we can show.
I mean, I have a feeling you're gonna have to have the twelve, then more than the ten. I have a feeling it's gonna be closer to the fifteen.
Be sixteen million.
You're right.
So, so what you could approve, you could approve a fourteen to sixteen million. That gives me the ability, I can go have him do a ten, eleven, and a twelve. So that way we can see that gives you enough to go to ESA and say, hey, we're gonna look at a fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Tell, tell Rob you got a ten million dollar budget, he'll end up at about a fourteen.
He'll get us up to a fourteen.
Tell him, tell him you got ten million.
Okay, so.
I would say no more than sixteen total.
Yeah, no more than sixteen.
So your motion, do you want to add that on your motion? No more than sixteen million?
No more than sixteen million.
Okay. So your motion is to approve item eight. Okay, help me word this. Approve item eight.
Approve the sprung structure with the?
Approve the sprung structure, thank you, that's right. Approve the sprung structure with a cap of no more than sixteen million.
Yes.
Total.
That's my motion.
Does that sound good?
Good to me.
Okay.
That sounds like a hallelujah.
And, stop!
And then you'll bring us back numbers for ten, eleven, and twelve.
And eleven, twelve, yeah. So that is your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay. So Commissioner Robinson, a motion to approve a sprung structure with a total of no more than sixteen million dollars.
Correct.
The details to be brought back at a later date.
Correct, for a final.
Does that sound good?
For final approval, yeah.
For final approval, whatever, however you want to say it. Okay, final approval on the financing to be brought back at a later date. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Can you put up the vote, please? I'm very excited. I should, I should clarify. I'm very excited that it didn't take longer to discuss that. That's what I'm trying to say.
Are you on the right one?
Yeah, right here. Yeah, it's not coming out.
She's tall, Dylan.
Did everybody vote, or?
No, mine didn't come up.
Click on that e-vote, I think it is, and it'll come back up, I think.
Correct, if you click e-vote in the top left-hand corner, that should bring up the prompt.
Okay. We have one more thing. Please do not close out your computers.
Just me. I promise I'll be quick.
Not that Commissioner Burnett would do that, but just in case, trying to help you out. All right. Got to have a little fun, right? Okay. And motion passes seven zero. Congratulations to all of you. I know you're excited.
Thank you.
Good work.
Moving on to item nine. Consider an act upon resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seventy requesting written approval from the local government division, Department of Finance Administration for revised budget numbers computed as of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This is fairly routine, so go ahead.
It is. Mayor, Mayor Protown Commissioners, the reason this is in front of you on new business instead of the consent agenda is there are two out of the three revisions that I need to highlight for you. The first one is a correction to cash. While doing our first quarter reporting for DFA, we realized that the due-to-do-firms from FY twenty twenty-four were not properly reversed in FY twenty-four, so we had to go back and do some corrections, which required us to come back and correct our beginning cash. It affected five funds total. The biggest was to the general fund, which actually, it was a plus to the general fund, about one point one million dollars increase in cash, but then it decreased the cash. So it is a net zero. The cash number is still the same, it's just moving it in between the different funds. So that was a correction. The other one that I needed to highlight is we are reprojecting the salaries and benefits for all of the different funds. This is usually something we do as part of the final budget rollover in July, but we had a lot of changes that happened in July this year, so we, we postponed it, including we had an increase in our health insurance. There was a change in the para laws that increased the employer's share of para, and then we also had an increase in our workers' comp. Modifier went up. And then, so we went ahead and reprojected all of the salaries and benefits based on the current pay plan and based on those current rates. We will do another re-projection of the salaries and benefits as we get closer to the year end, and we're bringing you the new preliminary budget stuff for FY twenty-six, which is crazy.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I don't.
Is that insurance going up?
The insurance has gone up twice now in the last year and a half. And then, unfortunately, when you have a police officer pass away, it counts against your workers' compensation, and so it made our mod rate increase on our workers' compensation. And so we'll be dealing with that for at least three years.
Ouch. We're gonna keep them all safe, though.
Yes.
Right, Cooney? Absolutely.
We try, that's our goal every single day when they're out on the streets.
Girl, you know I, how I feel about it. I forgot to mention that earlier, too, but anyway, okay. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero.
Let's tap into it.
I am gonna mention real quick, I should have done it during Commissioner comments, but I am gonna mention, and I'm gonna give a shout-out to, because I should have done that as well. We did have, there was a trial for the person that murdered our officer. It was very intense. I did spend the week in there. It was incredibly intense, but ultimately resulted in a conviction with a life sentence. And I need to give a shout-out to the District Attorney's Office. They did a phenomenal job. They really did. They were, if nobody has ever seen Scott Key in action, you should watch him in action, because he is very detailed, he's very, very precise, and I personally, for me, got a very clear picture of what happened that night, and he painted it well, and he did a great job. So shout-out to them, and thank goodness we got justice for Officer Ferguson's family. So I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that earlier.
Will we write a letter requesting the death penalty instead of life?
Interesting you should say that. The judge told the murderer.
I know this, this is on the agenda, so it's kind of.
No, but the judge did say to him when he was sentencing him, he said, if, if we had the death penalty, I would sentence you to die. And he did say that to him, and the judge was, as you know, the judge was John Sugg, and, and he, he had a, he literally had to reassess the court, and he had to go compose himself, because he was that upset about it. It was a very, very intense trial, but thank goodness justice was served as best it could be, right?
We can do a letter if you want one, Commissioner.
But, but, yes, but, well, and, and remember that our, our governor is coming in January for a town hall, so I think that we can vocalize that.
If the judge says it doesn't warrant the death penalty, it probably doesn't.
We don't have it. We don't have it.
We don't have it, yeah.
But we could write a letter requesting our new senators and.
Yes, yeah. No, and I think we should, I mean, maybe at the next meeting, maybe at the next meeting we can talk about that a little bit, because, but he did say that if he could, he would have, and so he was, he was very, very clear about that one. But anyway, okay, that's all I have. So do I have a motion? No, wait, do we need a motion to adjourn? I get so confused now.
We need a first and a second, then we're good.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. A motion from Mayor Protown McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. We are adjourned.
See?
Thank you.